Have a motion from District Five, second from District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Six and zero. Presentation of the 2013 A C C G Legislative Award. Presenter Todd Edwards, A C C G Associate Legislative Director. Mr. Edwards. Does anybody here represent A C C G? I would like to leave that open in the event if he came from Atlanta, he's probably on Interstate Seventy-Five. Request for waiver, Mr. Jeff Carrick, exhibit number one in your book. Mr. Carrick.
Yes, sir. At the request of Mr. David Curry, we have come to talk to you a little bit about, we have a strip shopping center in Stockbridge Parkland, that we are still making the payments on the eleven taxes and after a meeting with him, the amount of the payment with the penalty and the interest is not enough to keep up with that situation. We have added a couple new tenants to the building, so we will be able to increase our payment, but we come to you to humbly submit that if there's a possibility to waive some of the penalties and the interest on this project, that it would allow us to get back in good standings a lot quicker.
The board has their paperwork in front. Does anybody, any board member have any comments? It appears that the, there's several property tax that's accrued from, I guess, two thousand and eleven.
Yes, sir. All of the street addresses that are there are actually in the strip center itself. Each small parcel just has a different address. It's all on the same property.
So we've got one for eleven, there's two thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars as a penalty. Interest is four thousand six hundred eighty-nine.
That's correct.
The FIFA fee is thirty dollars.
Yes, sir.
Okay, then you've got for twelve, the penalty is two thousand six forty-eight seventy-five and the interest is two thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars and four cents and the FIFA is thirty dollars.
Yes, sir.
So the board has, does anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
Mr. Carrick, I think, is there any legal reason that you're asking for it? I mean, was there any, when I say legal reason, did they send it to the wrong address? Or, I mean, was there?
No, sir. We have been in a situation with the economy being like it's been for the last several years. We've just been in a situation where the rents would not substantiate and by the time we kept the payment halfway paid on the building and the insurance up on it and then sent everything else to the tax commissioner along with some of our own personal funds also.
Yes. Is it fully leased?
We are, at this point today, we are out of fourteen units, we're at thirteen, which is the best it's been as long as the building has been there.
I know that I've, I go by there all the time because my office is down the street.
Yes, sir.
And I know that there's a, like a sports bar, hamburgers, wings and that sort of thing, because I've eaten there on a number of occasions.
Yes, sir.
It just looked like to me that it was leased up pretty well. That's why I asked the question, because it seemed like there was always something in there. And it's hard for this board to waive something, you know, without some legal reason to do it, simply because everybody's gone through the hardship, you know? I mean, at the end of the day, I know, I know a lot of guys in the development of community, I actually know you pretty well, I think.
Yes, sir.
We fished together somewhere, but I can't remember where. But at the end of the day, we have not been granting them unless there was a legal reason and that legal reason was they got sent to the wrong address or there was some other reasoning behind it. And it puts the board in a real precarious situation because everybody's, pretty much is going to come up and tell us the exact same thing, you know, I couldn't pay it because. So I think it puts us in a bad position. I just, I just wanted to ask the question, make it very, you know, very plain about the, as far as the rental on it, like I say, it's very nice, it's right there by that car wash, you know, right there where it turns in there. But that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
I would like to reinforce the distinguished gentleman from District Four, the reason he asked for legal issues, if there's not significant legal issues, then if we waive this, it becomes a gratuity.
Yes, sir.
And that would be something this board cannot do. We cannot just merely give her gratuity. It has to be some kind of service or something to where we eroded or the tax commissioner eroded or something on a legal basis. So that's what we normally look for if, you know, simply because it's the hardship financially, it might be one thing and we've all been there, but we have to find, try to find some legal mechanisms that would allow us to do that. In this case, I don't see it, but I'm not the authority on this.
Okay.
So the board can either vote to deny it, vote to waive it, or do nothing, which would be a denial, so.
Well, it's in my district, so it's my responsibility and I think a lot of you, I really do, but it's a situation that, just because I think a lot of you, I can't cross that line that I couldn't cross with others, you know?
Yes, sir.
So I'm going to have to make a motion to deny, as much as I hate to do it, I really do, Jeff, I mean, I do, so.
We have a motion to deny, do we have a second? Have a second from District Five? Any further discussion? All opposed, lift your right hand. Thank you. This is denied.
Thank you.
I'm showing six and zero. Animal Control, Dangerous Dog Classification Appeal Hearing. Mr. Jeff Lavine and Ms. Latrina Smith request a hearing for the classification of a dangerous dog for their dogs. Presenter, jury, yoga director of Animal Care and Control.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm here before you this evening due to a request by Mr. Lavell and Ms. Smith to appeal the dangerous dog classification for their two white American Bulldogs. Prior to convening as the Animal Control Board, if you would like, for the benefit of the new Commissioners, I can briefly explain the state's Responsible Dog Owner Act and how it differs from what we've all known as the Dangerous Dog Law. In the nineteen eighties, the legislature passed the Dangerous Dog Law and it allowed animal control departments to classify dogs that, without provocation, bit a human being. The classifications were either potentially dangerous or dangerous, with potentially dangerous being the lesser, less severe of the two classifications and dangerous dogs being a dog that bit somebody unprovoked and did serious injury or even killed somebody. Excuse me. While the law certainly helped, classification of aggressive dogs could only be made after the dog had bitten somebody and animal control departments statewide continued to receive hundreds of calls from residents asking, you know, what can we do to protect ourselves before we get bitten? I mean, they were, you know, obviously upset that they actually had to wait until they were bitten or somebody was seriously injured before the state law would take effect. So in May of twenty twelve, Governor Deal signed into law the Responsible Dog Owner Act and it became effective in July of last year. It replaced the state's Dangerous Dog Law. The classification titles were changed. A potentially dangerous dog, the lesser of the two categories, became a dangerous dog. A dangerous dog became a vicious dog. It also tightened up restrictions on dog owners being able to keep a dog that had been classified. And it also added two subdefinitions to the classification of dangerous dog in order to meet the request of residents. One was a dog that runs on it while it's off the owner's property, kills somebody else, is pet animal. And the second one is a dog that aggressively attacks in a manner that causes a person to reasonably believe that the dog poses an imminent threat of serious injury to such person or another person, although no such injury occurs. And it's under that subdefinition of Dangerous Dog that we're here this evening. So with that said, if you would like to formally convene as the Animal Control Board, we can hear the appeal process.
Anybody have any questions for the Director? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask a question. I'd read this earlier and I had seen in this that there were multiple written warnings and citations in the past. Can you tell me how many in the past?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lavell and Ms. Smith have actually lived in Stockbridge on Stagecoach and then in two thousand and eight, I believe, they moved to their current address, which is on Oak Grove. Since, from two thousand and eight to two thousand and thirteen, our department shows a total of twenty complaints, eight from the previous address, twelve at the current address, seven written warnings, ten citations, one of which Mr. Lavell failed to appear in magistrate court for last week and a bench warrant letter has been issued, and three for the June eighth incident for which we're here now, that those have an August twenty thirteen court date.
Is this the same dogs?
No.
Okay, it's different dogs?
Different dogs.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for the Director? Yes, sir. We have one from.
Is this the same issue where they were?
Two pitts chased a lady into a yard and into.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
How many complaints pertaining to these dogs?
We've got a total of twelve at the current address, three in June of this year. Our first complaint came, and I don't know that the overhead's on, Julie can, Julie's not up here. I don't know how to pop the overhead on.
Yes, um.
Our first complaint, Mr. Lavell and.
It's on Jerry.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Can you not see it up there? Okay. What's happening? We can see it on this.
Flip it on. Do you have a second?
Thanks.
How about that?
Perfect.
All right, Mr. Lavell lives here at seven eleven Oak Grove Road, that's the property that's marked in blue. Thirty Meadows Court, Mr. Lavell and Ms. Beach share a common fence. Our first complaint was from Ms. Beach at Thirty Meadows Court when she found her poo dead laying up against the back fence and her complaint was that Mr. Lavell's dogs had killed her dogs. She didn't witness the incident, Mr. Lavell didn't witness the incident, there were no other witnesses to the incident, so there was nothing Animal Control could do. You know, we obviously saw her dog deadmauled in the backyard, but as there were no witnesses to the event, there was nothing Animal Control could do. Two weeks later, we had a complaint from here, which is one forty-nine Summerfield Drive. Mr. Lavell's dogs were again at large. They went onto the back porch of one forty-nine Summerfield Drive, they have a little small fifteen-year-old Pomeranian, they jumped on the Pomeranian, the dog owners were able to get their Pomeranian up without injury. Mr. Lavell did retrieve his dogs. Citation was issued for that event, which was the citation that Mr. Lavell did not appear in court for last Thursday. And then the event that we're here for tonight, Ms. Crawley, who lives here on June eighth, was walking home, this is on Saturday, about four o'clock on June eighth. She was cutting through the yard at one thirty Meadows when the dogs accosted her, came out aggressive. She was able to climb up on a child's playset to get away from the dogs. When the dogs went around the corner and Ms. Crawley and Ms. Beach are both here tonight for any questions you might have for them, she was able to get to the resident's front door, they let her in, generated two calls to nine one one. When my officer, James Cannon, excuse me, who is here tonight, he arrived on scene. Henry County Police Officer Mike Smith was already on scene. We have witness statements provided to the court or provided to the department for our court file. The dogs were impounded. Lavell and Ms. Smith live here, the dogs were impounded from a backyard here on June eighth where they've remained at the shelter since that time.
Anybody else have any questions for the Director?
The problem somewhat compounded. We have had the dogs since June eighth. We have two dogs, one's a male, one's a female. The male dog's considerably larger, he's white, he's blue-eyed, you have pictures in your packets, he's stone deaf.
Just allowed to run free or are they chained up and they're escaping?
They're escaping from a fenced backyard. Now, when the second event occurred, when the dogs went up to the Crawleys, I had a conversation with Mr. Lavell on the telephone. Those two incidents probably generated about fifty telephone calls to the department from other residents concerned for their safety, their children's safety, their grandchildren's safety, their pets' safety. I called Mr. Lavell and said, look, you know, person to person here, your neighbors are not happy, they're gunning for your dogs. They're watching, they're scared, they're concerned. You need to do whatever it is you need to do, whether it's put them in the house, fix your fence, whatever it is that you need to do to do two things. You need to protect your neighbors from your dogs and you need to protect your dogs from your neighbors. Two weeks later, they're out again and we have this incident. Now, I will tell you that we impounded the dogs on the eighth. You have in your packet on June tenth, Mr. Lavell put a post on Craigslist offering the mail free to a good home. The dog certainly can't leave, can't be placed unless it's classified. The classification follows the dog for the lifetime of the dog. So these apparently don't intend to be dogs. Mr. Lavell has a history of multiple dogs at the addresses. This apparently is not a dog he has any intention of keeping. And in fact, I have spoken to the owner of the rental property he lives in, Mr. Mangrew, who has advised that the dogs, if in fact the classification is upheld, cannot return to his property.
Anybody else have any comments? If not, would you be so kind as to state your name and address to the records and?
Yes, my name is Jeff Lavell and I'm representing my dogs. They're on trial today for their life and I live at seven eleven Oak Grove Road and I have a case, I have bill, I have everything here. I don't know how all this works, but she has stuff right here. I'm going to read everything that I have. I got from maps to statements to everything here and if y'all would like, you know, for me to go ahead and proceed with what I got?
This is time for your presentation.
Okay, here it goes. Latrina, this is Latrina's statement, there was no statement made that day with anyone. I couldn't find a police report, I couldn't find anything. Ms. Jerry here told me it was a police report. I went up there two weeks later looking for a police report. Police, there was no police report, they called and Jerry said there was no police report, but she told me there was. So there was nothing, nothing written down, there was nothing stated that day. So I got with Latrina and this is it. Latrina's unofficial statement told to me since law enforcement did not take one from her, so this statement was written based on the truth and nothing but the truth, so helped my dog's life. While Latrina was crossing the field to get the dogs, she got to Summerfield Drive and seen Marion passing her going towards Oak Grove Road with no one in the car with her. There was no one in the car with her at that time. After Latrina passed Meadows Court trying to get the dogs, she seen Marion go back to her house and come back out towards Summerfield Lane where Marion's friend stayed at. And that's, that's just, Summerfield Lane, that's where she turned down, that's the only thing we can assume, that's where she stayed. In the meantime, Latrina walked past Summerfield Lane and turned left on Summerfield Drive where she knew this man named Charlie. She asked him to help since she was on foot and had, and he had a truck, but instead of helping her, he cussed her out and totally disrespected her. So Latrina started headed towards Jodico Road down Summerfield Drive. When she seen Marion coming full throttle with her car right towards her, Latrina jumped out of the way before Marion, you know, got to her. Then Marion hit the brakes, coming to a screeching halt, then threw her car into reverse all the way to where the dogs were and jumped out like a maniac and chasing the two dogs into some bushes. And in the meanwhile, someone stopped and asked Latrina, is she okay? And in the meanwhile, someone stopped and asked Latrina, is she okay? And what in the world is wrong with that lady, Marion? She was acting erratic, yelling, screaming, no one could understand what she was saying, pointing out the window and, you know, this, I was on the phone with her the whole time. I was, I was working on, doing gutters and I couldn't, I couldn't make it, I couldn't come. And passersby were just worried about Latrina's safety. That's when Latrina noticed another woman with Marion when she charged towards her with her car. And I guess that woman, you know, it's either this woman, I don't really know who the woman was. Latrina was scared, so she headed towards Jodico Road. She walked right past Marion in the bushes, Marion was in the bushes with the dogs, I have no clue why, and went to the BP, that's on Jodico Road and Oak Grove Road, Jodico and Oak Grove Road has a BP on it. While there at BP, the Pomeranian owner and the passenger that was in Marion's car showed up at the BP and pulled right behind Christie's car. Christie is a worker at the BP, pulled right behind it and blocked her in and both jumped out yelling and, you know, antagonizing Latrina about the dogs, trying to start, you know, start a fight or, you know, whatever they were trying to start at that, at that time. Latrina was very scared of all this stuff that happened that day and to where it ended at the BP, so she went home, she walked home and waited on me. No law enforcement nor animal control came to seven eleven Oak Grove Road to take statements from Latrina or anything so she could tell her side of the story. All of this is, you know, is hearsay and just, just people, either they were very high that day, they were acting erratic and it was just a, if I was there that day, I mean, I couldn't imagine what was going on, what she seen, you know? And that was the statement, it was the date, June eighth, two thousand and thirteen, it's unofficial report due to, you know, law enforcement not taking any statements, it's signed by her and it's signed by me. And I have a map. This map shows, I'm going to put it on the screen.
I don't think we can.
Yeah, they got it.
Or have they? Can you see it? Put it on the dot.
Yeah, I got you. All right.
Is that on the screen now? I was talking about up there. Okay. I got you.
All right, Jodico Road, this Oak Grove Road, and this right here is my address and this is Marion's, same map that she showed you earlier. I just, I drew mine out and I highlighted areas. Okay, this is, this is where the dogs started. The dotted lines is a chart right here where I drew of each what represent. This is the dotted lines, the dogs were in this field because if they were coming out my house, they could cross over to this neighborhood, which I'm zoned inside this neighborhood, but I'm not really in the neighborhood. They crossed over and they just, they just basically, you know, just beelined it straight to this address. There was no, there's no other way they went. And this is Latrina, Latrina is this pink, she went, this is where she went, that's where she asked Charlie for help and that's when she went back out to Jodico and she went past where Marion was in the bushes. Now, this is Marion. When Latrina seen Marion at first, exactly right here coming out of her road and as you see, Marion was just riding around, who knows, who knows why, but this, this is the exact thing because Marion went this way, did a U-turn, come back, went back to her address, came out, came this way, went down this street and this street is Summerfield Lane. She come back out and that's when she seen Latrina walking back towards Jodico Road and she charged her with her car and then she come to a screeching halt and then just put it in reverse and straight up, just straight to the dogs, jumped out to the, just ran towards the dogs into the bushes. I had, I have no clue what in the world was going on in her mind, but this is, this is my, this is my case and my map and the map of the path of dogs, Latrina and Marion. And it's, it shows of the path of everyone took, my dogs took a path to here, to here. Latrina was trying to get my dogs, but you had a woman driving erratically, there was no one out, there was no one walking. Both Marion and that lady that says she got chased was inside that car. It was, it was, I think it's a made up story from Jerry calling me that day, she said she called me. When I went up there on a Wednesday, it was June twelfth, I went to get my, went to get my dogs, she told me that I asked her about the conversation that we had, I said, do you remember what you said about they're out to get me? You said you just got an earful from the, from the father of Marion and the Pomeranian's owner's wife. You got an earful and she said she's warning me, keep your dogs in the fence, they're out to get you. And anyone knows from here to behind me that out to get you means anything from lying to doing anything to get me and my dogs. So when they got out that time, but that, when they got out that time, that's when all this stuff went down and I took every measures to keep my dogs in the fence by putting stakes in the fence and Animal Control seen me putting stakes in the fence from the, from when Marion, well, from the, I think the Pomeranian incident. There was no citations, there was nothing from that day. The day she said that I got a citation and I got a, I had a court date, there was no citations at all. That guy told me that the guy don't want to press charges because he thinks he was just playing, that, come on, that, that dog is just small, I got a hundred and twenty pounds. All they were doing was playing with it. That's all, because when that dog, the owner went out there to the dog, the dog was not even near the Pomeranian, okay? But, you know, it's just, it's the male and the female was not near the Pomeranian, they weren't trying to cause no harm, they just played too rough. They're big dogs, okay? And he didn't want to press charges, so the Animal Control, my dogs are in my yard, Animal Control couldn't do nothing here, had given me no citations, there was nothing given to me, just like the day of June eighth, nothing was given to me. You know, when that, you know, when the citations was given to me on, from June eighth, three days ago, they were delivered to my address from a lady, I can't remember her name, they were delivered to my address three days ago. So what she's saying about a court date and a bench warrant, I was not received any citations for anything on, about these dogs.
There's June third.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Sir, is it by your own statement that the dogs were outside of your property? I mean, is the purple where the dog's path was that you're stating?
I didn't have another highlighter, but these dots here, you see?
Right.
These dots is the path that they took and it goes right here and ends right there where they were in the bushes with Marion.
But they were off your property?
Yes. Yes. Okay, and, you know, when they classify humans in, into, it's three days, they classify humans for drug uses or whatever and they release you or keep you. Okay, my dog's been locked up thirty, thirty-eight days now. Okay, I have talked to, you know, many people there and to profile a human being or an animal, they've been locked up for thirty-eight days and that's a great profile. There was only a minute, a minute and a half, they profiled my dogs due to hearsay of what they said. Okay, I might have citations, I might have all that, but none of those citations was ever, ever, because my dogs were mean or anything. They're very nice dogs, anybody can tell you that my dogs are really nice, but those citations, I accept citations, but for my dogs to be classified as dangerous, no. My dogs did not do anything dangerously, didn't do anything, anything wrong to, for anything. And from the hootle to the Pomeranian, there was, there was nothing, there was nothing that, I mean, I was talking to the Animal Control officer that was behind the fence at the time and I got some stakes, I was like, I'm fixing it, I'm sorry this happened. I went over there and seen the Pomeranian, I think four or five days later, it was fine. You know, it just had, it had a couple of scabs on his, on his, you know, on his back. Yes, sir.
The dogs chased Marion into the bushes?
Marion chased the dogs into the bushes.
And they're pit bulls?
And they're, no, they're American Bulldogs.
Okay.
Yes. I still got more to go, you can ask any question.
You had twelve citations.
Yes, sir.
Just on these dogs, how many related to them getting out of the fence?
No, sir. There was never anything on none of these dogs. That dog, that citations are on or is deceased. He was my, he was my only male and my first male that I ever had and he was the best dog that I ever had. He would get out, he would go play with the, with the neighborhood, you know, fetch and everything. People didn't know whose it was, they'd turn it in. Of course you get a citation for a loose dog. Every time you get a citation, you only get that three of them for the leash laws, for this law, the rape, you know, things like that. Now, twelve, twelve of them could have been only three incidents, you know, because you get my drift, that dog is deceased. There was, yes. There was, there was nothing said, there was no citations or anything for these dogs. These dogs have never been arrested, these dogs have never been anything. All that, all them that she has is my male that I had, that he, you know, he got out, he would get a citation for the collar, the leash, stuff like that, which, which is the law. And he is deceased, but these dogs have never, ever, it was a year and a half, and them dogs have electric fence up, I have everything. Now, those stakes, they were metal stakes and I put them all the way in the ground. When I went out there trying to figure out how my dogs got out, guess what? They were out of the fence on the bottom and it connects to, to her yard and then she has, and her yard goes like this, my fence, so, and then stakes over here are missing. So I got more, more stuff here, if you let me read it. Okay. Um, okay, uh. Let's see.
Do you have any witnesses on your behalf?
Well, I'm kind of representing Latrina because I wasn't there. I'm representing my dogs, uh, witnesses as in, as in what?
Does the animal director have witnesses?
This is Ms. Beach.
Okay, okay, I was, I'm just gonna put that on standby. Okay, so right now we're hearing the...
Mm-hmm.
Yes, so...
Okay.
Continue.
You know, any dog can be considered dangerous. Um, if you have a, a hyper dog, like a boxer, very nice dog, most, you know, most of them are, are very hyper. If they jump on an elderly person, the elderly person falls, that dog can be considered dangerous. And, uh, you know, I, I studied this whole thing because this is my dog's life, my two dogs' lives that, I mean, come on, I'm on trial right now for my dogs. And, um, uh, my, you know, my male, male's death also, uh, but right here, see, uh, it says, okay, Marion is, Marion is always stopping on the main street of Oak Grove Road directly in front of our home. We live on the main road, it's forty-five through there. She stops for, for no, no godly reason, I have no clue. She just stops in front of our home about twice a week. And at night around twelve to four AM, uh, I catch her, um, from my, from my, my dog's barking, I catch her in her backyard against my fence, uh, with a flashlight and sometimes crawling on the ground. And you know, and sometimes she has her kid, you know, with her at that time. And I always yell out the window, I say, "It's past curfew, get back in the house. You got your child with you?" You know, of course she exchanged some words, uh, you know, curse words, but I just tell her, "Get back in the house, what are you doing at my fence?" Um, but when she stops in front of the home, I'm always at work and Latrina was always at home. And when I come home, Latrina will always tell me that Marion stopped in front of her house again. And I, there's no apparent reason just to stop in the middle of the dang road in front of her. She's kind of, you know, pestering us, pestering us, pestering us, pestering us. And we had none but trouble out of this woman. It, it's kind of like a Lifetime movie where she was obsessed with something, had no clue what it is. Um, and I don't know if it's us, uh, it's, you just gotta be there. It's wild. Um, all I can say is a life, it's like a Lifetime movie. Now, I'm gonna get to Jerry. Um, the day I come, um, come to, to pick up my dogs. Friday they were gonna get euthanized and, um, Wednesday I come out there to pick, pick the dogs up. I was not notified from Saturday to Wednesday, not notified, no phone call, nobody showed up, no citations, no nothing until that, that Wednesday I come up. And Jerry was just telling me that, uh, that...
What day was that?
Uh, it was Ju- Ju- uh, June 8th and June 12th. June 12th I showed up to, uh, you know, get my dogs, you know? Uh, that's the only time I could make it before four.
Well, I thought you indicated you didn't, nobody notified you.
Nobody notified me.
How'd you know to pick your dog up?
Bec- bec- well, because I knew that they were, they were arrested because of Latrina. This, yeah, she was out there trying to get them. But, um, you know, I mean, Latrina, you know, I couldn't go get them. I mean, they closed at four and I had the vehicle every day. So I went to go get them and that's when I was notified and I said, "Let's take it to trial." Um, but the guy that euthanizes the dog says your dogs will be euthanized Friday. That's the, that's the date. Okay? And then, uh, let's see, let's, well, I'm gonna get to the laws right quick. Um, page, uh, page seven, uh, well, page thirty-four, section three, four, five, three, uh, section D. It says, let me get to it. Um, "When a hearing is requested, uh, by a dog owner and an ordinance with, uh, subsessions, uh, of this session such as a hearing shall be within thirty days." You know, I, I just want to bring that up in court. It's been thirty-four days. It says it's within, within thirty days, um, upon my request. Uh, when I requested it, it was signed, it was, it was sealed and today's the thirty-fourth day and it says in the law, "It shall be thirty days from the time I, I did it." Just want to kind of bring that to, to the attention. Uh, if you go to page thirty-five, um, ses- uh, section three, four, five, five.
Run the, uh, what was the thirty-day deal now?
Well, uh, the law says that, um, upon request of a trial date, um, that I have thirty, it was thirty days from that date that I shall have, I shall have a court date and it's been thirty, it'll be thirty-four days today.
The, the law allows that once they, the dog owner gives notice of appeal, which Mr. Lovell did on June fourteenth, then the...
June 12th.
Uh, no, it was the fourteenth. Like, would you like a copy of what you signed?
Eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. If, if it was arrested on Saturday and I show up on Wednesday, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Saturday, Sunday, Monday to the Wednesday.
I'm just trying to get clarification on the thirty days.
We have to, we request, he, once an appeal is requested...
Excuse me, uh, I'm, I'm talking to the young lady. I'll be in touch with you.
Once a hearing is requested, they have, we have to provide a hearing within thirty business days. Which, which was in accordance because he signed the, um, appeal hearing. It should be, a notice of appeal should be in your packet.
So this was on June the twentieth, is that correct?
There's a lot of paperwork involved in the process. Here's your signed statement.
Yes, I got it here. Yes. That's what I'm, um...
It's not in your packet. Mr. Lovell signed for a request for animal control on the fourteenth.
Okay, could you just put that up on the middle for the, for us?
I should have put it in the middle.
It's upside down.
Hmm. It's not right.
Okay. So did you have a question from this one?
Yes, sir.
Did you say that you did not get a citation on the date of June eight?
There was no citation, but three days ago I received those. Three days ago. They put up my address and the lady said, "I have some citations for you." I was like, "Oh God, what for?" And I, I thought I was gonna receive them here. She, uh, she, uh, she gave them to me and I signed them.
See, I was just looking at this field activity report.
Yes, sir.
And it said on six, eight, two thousand thirteen, it looks like a nine-one-one call was made and they come out and, uh, one was being chased by two dogs and, uh, also, uh, it looks like here that a citation was issued to somebody.
Is that right?
That's what the report said.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that. Anybody have any questions?
I'm just trying to figure out, uh, Saturday it was arrested on six, eight and I showed up on Wednesday, um, to, to get my dogs and that would be the twelfth. Now, it, this, it could, I don't know if it mistaken on, on the part, but I did show up on Wednesday because Friday would have been the euthanization. They don't keep dogs over, you know, what, what would it be by Monday if I showed up on a Friday? You know, it's just, uh, it just, it just doesn't match up because the guy said you got two days, Friday will be, they said the day after tomorrow they will be euthanized. Okay, I'm gonna get back to the other law. Um, I was interrupting.
The hearing order requires the hearing to be scheduled within thirty days, not conducted within thirty days. And he was, he was notifying the scheduling within thirty days.
Thank, thank you for that.
Misunderstanding and my part.
It doesn't have to take place, it just has to be scheduled.
Yes, sir. I understand now.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Um, page thirty-five, set, section three, four, five, five, um, is, uh, when I come in and I was, uh, you know, wasn't gonna take this trial, you know, I figured, you know, I mean, I want my do- dogs out, I don't want nothing to happen to them. And, uh, I was gonna, you know, go ahead and, uh, try to see if I can, you know, get my dogs out and, you know, uh, go ahead and settle with the, the dangerous act and all that stuff. And I was, and I asked her, I was like, "Well, um, I, I guess I could do it and beat the court because they were kind of saying that when you go to court, it's gonna be a lot tougher." You know, when you're on trial anywhere, when you go to trial, you're gonna get the max. So I was like, "Well, I don't want to get screwed up in court." And anyway, I just took it anyways because of what she told me. Um, she told me I could not have my dog inside in a kennel. I have, you know, many kennels, I got, you know, ni- nice big kennels for my dogs to keep them inside. And she said that she don't think my dogs will, um, be able to stay inside in those kennels. And, uh, it states here in the laws, uh, section three, four, five, five, uh, page thirty-five and number one, "The owner has, uh, and, uh, the owner needs, has an enclosure designed to securely, uh, confine the classified dog, uh, on the owner's property indoors or in a secured, locked, enclosed, pinned fence structure suitable for the prevent the classified dog from leaving such property." Um, she just, and then when she told me I couldn't keep it inside, it was costing me a lot of money to go ahead and fix my kennel outside, to put a roof on it and all that when I could keep them inside. And she told me that she had to get with someone, she would get back with me. She never got back with me about, about keeping my dogs inside. And I started studying the laws. It's, it says that I could, I could. It doesn't say that, you know, upon, you know, her request or anyone's...
Chairman Smith.
No, excuse me. He, he, he has to fore.
And, um, and that's, I mean, that's, and I, and I was really, it was that, it was that same day I went to go pick up my dogs. And, uh, we was going back and forth in a sense and, um, about, about the dogs. And, and I was talking to people, I was talking to the trustees, I was talking to many people. And if, um, and if you would go to page twenty-five, this is, uh... Page twenty-five, se- uh, session three, four, thirty-two, "Notice to Owners of Impounded Animals." Okay? It says, uh, "Upon impounding any dog or any, uh, other animals, uh, the Board of Commissioners by, by and through the Director of Animal Care and Control Department of Henry County, Georgia, or its authorized representatives, shall cause to be made a prompt and reasonable effort to locate animal's owner, possessor, or custodian. Upon location thereof, notification, impounding shall be sent to this owner, possessor of, or custodian." Okay? When I, uh, when I showed up that day, there was nothing, no one sent, came, or called, uh, me to notify me of my dogs being locked up, even though, you know, I knew, but they did not know because as you see, there was no statements made, how did they know that we knew? Um, but it says here they, it was prompted to make it and they were gonna get euthanized two days, two days prior to me showing up. And I said, and I was really worried about that until I seen this and, and, um, so when I, when I come up there about that, um, I went in the back to go see my dogs. I looked up and my name was above those dogs. Those dogs have never been arrested. Those dogs had, don't have a chip in it, don't have a collar. How would they know they were mine? Why would they know, why would they know they were mine? This, if they didn't contact me, it's just hearsay, the neighbors, you know, that was, they, they got caught away, uh, you know, a quarter mile from my home, how did they know they were mine? Then, you know, these people that work for animal control doesn't, you know, they're not my neighbors. They don't know they're mine, but my name was above it. They had no, no effort to contact me or Latrina at the home, um, to call or anything. But as you've seen, that she contacted me one time to tell me that my neighbors behind me were out to get me. So why couldn't she contact me till my dogs were locked up? And it says that she, it, it made prompt and reasonable effort to locate the animal's owner. And then, and then she failed to do that. And, um...
Let me ask you, you said your dogs did not have a collar, identification?
No, they did not. They had no identification on them. No chip, no identification.
Well, let me ask you a question. You stated earlier that, that your male pit was deaf.
Yes, sir.
So if that dog gets out and chases after somebody and goes after somebody or goes toward the road, how you control that dog?
That dog, that dog stays, he, he has a big backyard and he stays in that backyard. For a year and a half, he has stayed in that backyard. And for like a three-week period, he got out. For those three weeks, the first time in a year and a half, he's ever, ever got out. I have no reason why he would get out. Only thing I could think of when I, when I was saying, when I look out my back window and, uh, and, you know, um, you know, the guy back here, he seen Marion walking her new poodle against my fence. And I got big old trees, she had big old trees in her yard and my fence in front of them. What in the world do you, and, are you walking your new poodle against my fence for? You're terrorizing me and my dogs. So I'm thinking that she ta- she was terrorizing my dog prior to that and, and my dog just, you know, was just getting, was getting out or either she was, I, I don't know, I just know that it was, for a year and a half, I never had a problem. I got electric fence, I got everything up for my dogs. And, uh...
How did your dog get out? Did you know of?
Say, say it again.
How many times do you know your dogs got out?
Three.
Three times?
Three, for, for these dogs that are locked up in, in the backyard. Yes. My dog, deaf, like he said, my dogs never are not under restraint because he's deaf. I mean, you, that's, I'm not, they're animals, they're, they're, come on, they're animals. I can't control a deaf animal. Uh, I'm not, you know, idiot, I'm a, I'm a good dog owner, but I mean, as you can see it, I mean, all the citations, but I, I love, I love my dogs and none of them, none of them aggressive. I got four kids. They would not hurt a, a human being. And being chased, uh, you know, from her running to the bushes after them, I have, I have no clue if, if you were to get chased, why would you run? I, I have, I don't know about that one. But then, uh, at the same time, I was, I was talking to, uh, Jerry, I was telling her about, um, I was talking to the trustees and asking them, um, two weeks later after I come there, I, uh, um, come back and talk to the trustees in the back and ask them about my dogs. You know, the people, that's, they see them every day, they take care of them, ask them about my dogs. Every time I went there, my dogs were the quietest, my dogs were sitting there, they laid back and they were, they were, they were, they were real good dogs. And the, and the trustee that, that handled that side by cleaning it, uh, feeding them, washing the, their cages and everything out, taking them out to the, uh, the yard, I guess where they, where they exercise to get the sun or, or whatever. I asked Jerry about it and Jerry told me trustees don't handle the dogs, um, to me. And I, and I told her, I was like, uh, I just talked to the trustees and they do handle the dogs. Um, they do everything with those dogs until, till they, nighttime, they go back to, you know, uh, the dorms or wherever they, wherever they go. And then I brought up, and I brought up another, uh, thing to her about, um, what does "Out to get me" stand for you? And she, and, and she didn't know what I was talking about, you know? And I told her, "The phone call you made and you said that the, uh, the neighbors are out to get me, so keep your dogs in." And, uh, and I was, you know, I was, I was happy she called me. I said, "Thank you," you know, and all that. And she just got an earful and she's tired of hearing all this crazy stuff going on with these people, uh, from the dad to Pam Ranon, they're just calling and they're trying to press charges, but it, but it was too late, they're trying to put, push all these things, but it, like she said, it's, she told me it's too, it's too late. You done said no, you done said all this because there was no harm, there was nothing done to, to, and there was no proof of anything by law that my dog's done anything in those prior incidents. And my dog getting out that time, they're out to get me, they'll do anything, anybody's out to get anybody's gonna say anything or do anything to, to do, to doing that person prior to what Jerry told me. She says she did not say that. And I got heated, I, I mean, I got heated, I said, that's the second lie you told me, you know, to, to my face and you, and you, you know, that's, you know, I look at law enforcement as, you know, as a, you know, somebody of law and, and would tell, tell me the truth. You know, I'm a resident of Henry County.
Why don't we do this right now? Let's, let's hear, uh, briefly, is, uh, Animal Control, have you got some of the people, the witnesses that, that was feared?
This is Ms. Beach, she lives directly behind-
Okay, for the record, would you be so kind as to step to the podium, give you a name and address in a brief scenario of what you know?
Yes, my name is Marion Beach and I live at Thirty Meadows Court, McDonough, Georgia, three oh two five three. I live directly behind them. Um, our fence connects to each other, part of my backyard does. Um, and I did get a new poodle back in January, on January the twelfth, that I would let in the backyard to go to the bathroom. Um, never did I walk the dog on a leash, I just let the dog in the backyard. They did play with the pit bulls, uh, on the back fence. Now, I have twenty Leland cypress trees planted in my backyard that were planted fifteen years ago, they are now over thirty feet high, I cannot get through the fence unless I do crawl on my hands and knees, which is the day I found my dog, all the way up against the fence dead. Now, I have a, as you can see on here, quite a big backyard that this fence is in and to find him dead all the way up against the fence only shows me one thing, that their dog was killed by their dog. Two weeks prior to this happening to my poodle on June the eighth, their dogs were in my backyard, in the fenced-in backyard, and my dog came flying through my pet door, which was thankfully open that day. And I thought, what, what's happened? So I went and I looked out in my backyard and their two pit bulls were in my backyard and my dog was safely in my house and my daughter, which is seven and a half years old, was safely in my house too. Thank goodness. So I did call them and tell them, come and get your dogs, they're in my backyard. As being a nice neighbor, if I was out to get him, I would not have called and said, come and get your dogs. I would have called Animal Control immediately to come and get them. But as being a nice neighbor, I called and told them to please come and get your dogs from my backyard. And they did.
Okay, do we have anybody else that'd like to be heard at this time? State your name and address, please.
Amanda Carley, one forty-nine Summerfield Drive. Um, I'm the one that was chased by the dogs. Um, I was walking back from the BP and when I was walking down through her yard, I seen them in the, the cul-de-sac. And I was thinking, okay, they're just gonna keep on going about their way. When they turned around, looked at me, started barking and charged me, and I ran up her playset and they started like to claw on the playset. When they went around the side of her house, I went and beat on her door and to where she let me in, I called nine one one. And we stayed in her house until nine one one showed up. And then nine one, uh, Mr. Smith, I believe was officer's name, was helping us look for these dogs because he said there was nothing he could do unless he found the dogs. We told him that she was currently looking for the dogs and when he approached her leaving Charles's house, she told him they were not her dogs, that she got rid of them a week prior to that. And when he was talking to her, we flagged the officer down because we'd found the dogs in a yard and the officer came and they held the dogs in the backyard of this guy's house until Animal Control got there.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else need to be heard? I think that the board have any questions of either party? If not, I think we have sufficient.
Say what?
Do you have a question? I thought I heard somebody. Okay. We can-
I want to ask Jerry one. Jerry, we upheld this decision based by the Animal Control today, what happens to the dogs?
Uh, the dogs will, the classification will be upheld. Um, Mr. Lavell at that point, because we've spoken to his landlord, Mr. Lavell is a renter, the landlord has advised that the, these dogs cannot come back to that particular property. Mr. Lavell would then have twenty days to find alternate arrangements for the dogs. Um, prior to this, he had stated that he had a, uh, business associate that was interested in one of the dogs. I advise that I would need the name, address, telephone number of that person because the classification follows the dog. The dog was staying in Henry County, we would have to be aware if the dog is moved to another county, then we are required by law to notify the, the new county that thinks that has a dangerous dog moving into the property. At the end of twenty, we allow twenty days for Mr. Lavell to reclaim his dogs from the shelter. If they're not reclaimed within twenty days, they will be humanely euthanized.
We hit the point here where the commissioners, uh, has heard evidence.
Can I say something?
Say it again.
Can I, could I say something?
Yes, sure.
Okay, um, has the lady, I forget her name, this lady here, said she was, she was chased in a, of a, of a swing set. I mean, swing sets don't hang from trees, they don't hang from, from a roof, they, they're on the ground. Okay. Like I said, my dogs don't mean no harm, I got four kids. I have my do- I have had dogs in my front yard, would say if somebody pulls up, they're scared to get out of the car because they're just scared of dogs for no reason. Now, her stating that she was chased, they're, they're, this is a hundred and twenty pound dog, no one can outrun any dog, I don't care who you are. Now, come on, that dog was causing any harm? You think it would've, would've stopped her from standing on a swing that's this high from the ground? Come on. My dog was not dangerous, she's just one of the people that are scared of dogs. She must've been attacked or something happened to her life that's, that she seen a big old dog. I mean, and, and the path, then the path of the dogs just don't match up where she, where she says she was. Uh, I just, um, it, it's, it's just unbelievable what she's saying. I mean, I could, I mean, she would've climbed on a roof and ladder or something, but I mean, on a swing set, come on. I mean, guys, uh, being chased, she was, it was no chasing at all, you know, barking. In, in the, in the laws, it says barking or growling or showing teeth is not a sign of a, a dog being dangerous. Even if a dog was to nip you, um, or scratch you or anything, it's not considered dangerous, no matter what happened in, uh, at all of that situation. If a dog was to charge you and nip you, that dog cannot be considered as dangerous at all. And it says that in the law. It's, and, and what happened to her? I'm, I'm thinking, you know, they come together on this little, little, little story to, to me because, uh, just what, I had got a phone call from her stating they're out to get me and, and all this and I did, uh, get, get onto her for lying to me that day and she was probably mad at me and all this stuff was just, it just, it's just, it's just a hearsay craft. It's, it's, it was no, no nothing from us, I mean, till today. My dogs have never been arrested, have never been aggressive, I have never, ever, ever had an aggressive dog ever in my life and what's, I mean, I mean, come on, guys, this is my, my dog's on trial.
You just said, uh, if the dogs charged you and nipped you, what, what does that mean?
If the dog was to cha- charge you or nip you or-
What does that mean? What does that mean?
Uh, I guess a nip, uh, without causing, uh, any, uh, serious harm from, from a, a puncture wound or a, a abrasion, abrasion can't be really considered, it's just like a, like a scratch, it can't be considered as a dangerous dog.
So it's a dog that charged you and attempted to bite you?
Yes, because I look, yes, and that's in the, in the law, but now, when I looked up aggressively dangerous in Georgia, they, and it defined the whole thing and a dog charging you cannot be considered as dangerous. And, and you say if you were in the park and you was running, the dog was chasing you, was kept running, running, you, you know, and you would just get somewhere, I mean, they said that, uh, that, that, that could be considered, but from a dog charging you, biting you, barking, showing teeth or anything right there at you cannot be considered as dangerous. And as she stated, I mean, she's jumped on a swing set or whatever she did and from the path my dogs took, it was, it doesn't match up with the story that she's given us. And from Marion riding around, in the car alone and then somehow picked her up, um, e- either, um, I, what I, what I was told on, um, Summerfield Lane, that's, that's way out the way, um, and, because that's when Latrina noticed that she was in the car when Marion charged her with her vehicle.
I just, I just have one more question.
Yes.
Um, earlier, um, it was discussed that you were chase, or no, you chased two dogs into the bushes.
No, 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 no.
That was Marion.
Oh, can, can you, can you tell us about that?
Uh-huh. No idea what he's talking about, sir. The day that we, um, she and I were in my vehicle, she came to my front door, beating on it. I let her in, she told me that she got attacked by the dogs and she ran up my playset. It's a playset that you go up six, like six feet up into a playhouse, which is where she had to hide to stay away from the dogs. Not two feet off the ground, I'm talking about six feet high off the ground. So, I don't-
The officer was there the whole time, like, once he got there, I showed him where I walked from, he went to the bread store where I cut through from, I mean, he was with, following us the whole time we were looking for these dogs. The officer himself stopped her while she was looking for the dogs. And she said, he said, they're your dogs, you need to get them. She said, they're not mine, I gave them away a week ago. So.
She was been in the car with me the whole entire time.
The, okay, where, where, oh, I believe, I believe my, my woman, she was very scared, scared that day after the incident, she, Marion charged her with the car. There was nobody in that car when Marion entered her cul-de-sac twice. Not one person was inside that car until, uh, Latrina's walking back from Charlie's home and seeing that this lady inside of a car and that it was the passenger of that car. There was nobody in the car. When she made that U-turn towards Oak Grove, uh, Road, she made a U-turn back, there was not one person inside that car.
I'm actually the one to let the officer know.
No, we, we, we're not gonna get in a contest here, I think we got all the information we got. Okay, what, what we gonna do now?
It's a conflict of interest and-
We, we can, uh, we've heard enough evidence. The, we can, uh, adopt a resolution that supports the finding that the dogs that are described herein are dangerous and classified is upheld, or we can determine that the evidence does not support a finding that, uh, the dogs described at hand are not potentially dangerous and classified. So, somebody wanna move in that direction?
I'll make a motion that we uphold the decision made by Henry County Animal Control.
We have a motion made to uphold the, uh, decision in classifying dangerous and classification is upheld. Do I have a second? Have a second from District Two. Any further discussions? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, no, so move. Thank you so much.
And, and what, and what is the opposed?
Sir?
And what is the opposed, that y'all just?
Okay, what we did, we adopted a resolution that's in our book. It says the evidence supports a finding that Jeff Lavell's dog, as described herein, are dangerous and the classification is upheld. So that means that we are supporting and upheld the decision made by the, uh, Animal Control Director. That's what that means. Thank you. Let's move to, uh, panel zoning, we have a public hearing, an ordinance to amend the ULDC, adding an alternate method of calculating permit fees for new construction. Michael Harris will present it.
Can I, could I appeal this?
Say again.
Could I appeal this decision?
Can you do what?
Could I appeal this decision?
I think you have to go to Superior Court.
All right.
Yes, sir. Yes, you can, you can appeal, I just said-
Okay, yes, sir, I'm gonna appeal this decision, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
There's too much lies, too many, too many laws that would state that my dogs are not dangerous. And from the, uh, from the police officer-
Mr. Harris.
Jerry lied to me numerous times.
We ready for Mr. Harris.
I'll bring it.
Good evening, Chairman, good evening, Board of Commissioners. This is, as noted, this is a public hearing to amend the Unified Land Development Code, Appendix B, Section one oh three point seven, concerning the method of calculating building fee permit valuations for new construction. Some time back, county staff was asked by the Board of Commissioners to review our current methodology that's used to compute building permit fees, um, for new construction projects. Currently, the Building Department utilizes the ICC, International Code Council's, um, valuation table to compute those, those values. Um, in past years, there's been some, some businesses and developers have expressed that this valuation method yields a unreasonably high permit fees on certain types of construction, but it was, uh, not consistent with the actual cost to complete the project. Um, also, we've also spoken with our development authority, um, and gotten some input from them as well, and they've had some concerns on some of the, um, projects that they've, they've sought after, um, and the challenges they've had associated with some of these higher building permit fees being non-competitive with some of the jurisdictions. We have, back on, on May seventh, the staff was directed by the BOC to prepare an ordinance to amend the ULDC, to address and come up with an option of contesting the current methodology for, um, computing building permit fees. And the ordinance you have before you is just that, it's a revised ordinance, we've looked at some other jurisdictions, it came up with, um, revised method to, that provides applicants with an option of contesting the building valuation, um, process. And what would be required of the applicant at that point would provide two supporting documents that would support the amended valuation fee. So, again, this, what we have before you is a, um, an amended ordinance to, to consider, um, an alternative to the building valuation fee. I'm here to answer any questions, also, I think Bob White was here, I think he may have stepped out. Oh, he is here, there he is. Bob White's here to answer any question that may be specifically, um, germane to the Development Authority.
Anybody have any questions? I'm gonna rely upon the distinguished gentleman from District Four. He has stated this for us, and if you'd be so kind as to share your thoughts.
Bob, if you'd just step to the podium, please. What I'm gonna do is make a, a couple of comments and then make sure that my comments are correct. Uh, I, I think it's well, people that know me know that I'm a commercial general contractor. I don't, I don't build houses, I don't develop property, I have no problem with those that do, but I'm a commercial general contractor. And in most cases, when I go to do a building, uh, it's several, including the one we're sitting in, but, uh, like at Eagles Land in particular, they had two Class A office buildings. When I went to get the permit at that time, we had to go, we only had one method in which we could identify what the permit cost would be. And those were higher than what they should've been, they were higher than the actual contract price for me to build those buildings. We've got three, uh, the applicant can pick between two of the three, and I just wanna go over them, Bob, and then I, if, if you got a comment on them, I'd like to hear it. But one is a, is a copy of the turnkey contract for the construction project supported by an affidavit as sworn to and executed by the owner, the contractor, that the contract accurately reflects the true cost of the completed project. Has to, that one would be one. The other would be a bank, a bank-approved appraisal prepared no later than twelve months prior to the billing permit. In most cases, when I'm billing a building for private, in the private sector, they have to have that, they have to have that appraisal in order for them to get their loan. They also have to have a certain amount of property leased out in order to make that work. Those two methods are two methods that we had talked about on several occasions between Mr. Harris and myself, and I feel like those would be fair. The third, obviously, being they would use the international valuation data. And in the smaller projects, that international data would be okay because it's not gonna be tremendously over. But when we get into one and that, where I'd like for you to go with this is on the, I believe it was the Home, it may be the Home Depot, may have been another, but when we looked at the construction costs based on what the actual contract was and what the county was using as evaluation, it was significantly higher, which takes us out of the playing field in some instances in order for us to get a Class A type office building or other structure here that would provide jobs and benefits and other things, you know, for our community. So if you would, just in that realm, in that realm, go into that detail for me, for the Home Depot, for us, the ones that are here, and those that may be watching.
Certainly, Commissioner, and thanks for the opportunity to be with you tonight. Uh, it came to our attention about November two thousand and eleven, uh, on one of the projects. And through the years, the Commissioners have used different methodologies to, uh, or the Building Department's used different methodologies to, uh, estimate the cost of construction of, of a building to apply the, the building permit fees. Uh, it came to our attention on a project that we were competing for, a competitive project on, uh, what turned out to be the George Pacific Building in the, uh, the Westridge Parkway area. And it's a nine hundred thousand, six hundred square foot building. And when I had approached the, uh, commercial, Chief Commercial Building Inspector to determine what the permit fees would be to pass along to the developers that were bidding competitively for the project, and I was told that the building permit fees would be, and building permit fees and plan review fees were gonna be more than three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that just stunned me at, at where we were coming from. And he took me through the International Code Council table, and if you've looked at that, it's got a lot of columns with numbers, doesn't say a particular type of building, there's a certain amount of, uh, knowledge that the code, uh, people have to look at as to what classification the buildings would be. But based on that Code Council table, the average cost per square foot of that building was seventy-seven dollars and thirty-three cents per square foot. I knew from previous experience and what we've been working on for a number of years with the large bulk industrial buildings, that the actual cost of construction on these tilt-wall construction buildings on the shell was closer to twenty-one to twenty-five dollars a square foot, not seventy-seven dollars and thirty-three cents a square foot. So we began to look at that and looking at what the permit fees should have been. Uh, I'll skip ahead to the Home Depot Fulfillment Center, which is a one point one million square foot building. And based on the code table, the value, uh, cost of that building would've been over ninety-one million dollars. Well, we knew, because we did bond issuance, uh, on the, the real property on that building, that the total value of the, uh, land and building financed through the bonds, uh, complete cost was, uh, uh, about forty-six million dollars on the bond, it ended up being less than that. The permit fees, had the permit fees on that particular project been based on the actual cost of construction using the methodology that, that the, that Michael and, and the team have looked at, uh, the total building permit fees and, and plan review fees would have been less than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on that particular project. Uh, I'll go back now to that building that the, uh, Code Council said, uh, table said would cost seventy-seven dollars and thirty-three cents, uh, to construct, sold in two thousand and twelve, uh, for twenty-nine million dollars, which, that's a leased building, so that was factored into the developer's valuation, uh, on what return on investment they wanted on selling that building. At that elevated level, it was still thirty-four dollars a square foot, not seventy-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. So that does make us less competitive, uh, when we're looking at, at other projects. Our biggest concern was not to turn the, uh, the Building Department's fee schedule on in, but to look at, at the methodologies being used and to come up with something that's fair. that's fair. And I do think that the things that they've ascribed here with the contracted cost or an appraised value on that is a reasonable safeguard to keep someone from just declaring any type of value on that. And I think in those cases where you can't demonstrate that, then you go back and refer to the, to the table. So I, I feel comfortable this accomplishes the goal that we were concerned with, with the, with the fees.
I think that one thing, in those buildings in the tilt-up, that's, that's probably the least expensive for the-
It is.
-for the big box-type construction. Well, I know it is because I've done it. But the other thing is, is, and this pertains outside of that, should we get a technical facility to come in and want to do something, or a, or a developer that wants to come in and do a speculative office building, then our construction cost would be for the shell and the core area with elevators and restrooms and that sort of thing. So once we do that, because each time they come in to get a permit for a tenant space, they're paying for that. So in the past, what's happened, a guy that's trying to build a speculative office building, he's paid for pretty close to what it would cost to have it built out, and then it's basically being a double permit, because then you go back in, you've got to pay for a permit again. So that was the reason for bringing this together, to give, you know, to get it on, to be fair and equitable for everyone, and it works for everyone. So I appreciate it, Bob. Thanks for that. And I just wanted to do it for our board to, to see what we were doing, why we were doing it, and for also those that are, you know, those that are watching and the ones that are currently here to understand why we're doing it. That's all I have.
Anybody else have any questions? We have an ordinance in the book. I highly, I support the ordinance. And it's a, in the County Board of Commissioners, an ordinance to amend Apex B, Section 103-7 of the United Land Development Code.
Chair, if you'd be able to take comments, if anyone may have any.
I haven't got that far yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I certainly appreciate you bringing that to my attention.
Just wanted to make sure we didn't miss it.
I forgot.
That's all right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
This is a public hearing. Anybody that'd like to be heard today, come up, state your name and address for this proposed ordinance? Let the record show none. If somebody considered moving to adopt the-
I'm moving to adopt.
We have an ordinance, amendment motion from District 4.
Thank you.
Have a second for District 5. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Go move.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Next, we have a public hearing request for authorization to transmit a short-term work program and capital improvement element annual update transmittal. Cheryl Hopson Matthews.
Good evening, Chair and Board members. The resolution before you all this evening is a resolution to transmit our annual short-term work program and capital improvement element. For the new commissioners, I'll give a very quick overview of what that means. The county every year is required by the Georgia planning law, and it's part of our comprehensive planning process, to identify all projects that we use impact fees for, or any projects that use SPOSS funds or any other type of general funds in the county. And we're required to identify what those projects are, be it transportation and/or capital projects, and identify funding source. What's before you all this evening is just a transmittal resolution. And what that means is that we are transmitting this document to the Department of Community Affairs and the Atlanta Regional Commission for their review. What they, what both agencies will do is review the information that has been provided and make sure that we do meet the minimum planning standards. Once that review has been concluded by both agencies, the county will be notified that we can adopt the actual short-term work program, but we cannot adopt it until after that review period has ended. It's certainly important for us to get this information to the Department of Community Affairs and to receive that notification to adopt it, because it, it allows us to continue to be classified as a qualified local government. What I have done is met with all of the various departments, the Fire Department, Department of Transportation, our Parks and Rec Department, Senior Services, Transit, our SPOSS Department, Transportation and Capital, and each department has reviewed every element and every project that has been included in this list. So all of the information is just a, it's all been compiled from the information that I have received. What I will do is, once you all authorize it, I will transmit it to the Atlanta Regional Commission for them to review it, and then I will bring it back for you all as a formal adoption, once we receive that approval. It does require a public hearing, so if you have any questions for me, I'll be more than happy to try to answer them for you.
Anybody have any questions? This is a public hearing as well. Do we have any citizen likely heard at this time for any reason? If not, we have a resolution in the book that calls for the short-term program and capital improvement elements covering the five-year period from 2013 to 2017. Does somebody move in that direction?
Move.
We have a motion from District 1, second from District 4. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Go move.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing and an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Section 2.04, .03, keeping and raising of livestock in accordance with Section 12.02, .11, and 12.03, .00 of the ULDC, and to amend Chapter 3-4, Public Safety, Chapter 1, Animals of the Code of Ordinances, Mr. Jeremy Gilbert.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members. The request that is before you is a ULDC text amendment regarding the keeping and raising of livestock. We heard this item at the May 21st, 2013 meeting of the Board of Commissioners, and it was tabled for staff to revisit the recommendation and reconsider options for those individuals not meeting the current code requirements. At that May 21st meeting, staff recommended that we just, current, we leave the current code as it stands with the minimum of three acres in the RA zoning district. Upon review and going back and, and receiving some additional comments, staff did review our current county code as it pertains to the allowance of miniature goats and pigs, and staff offers up the following three recommendations. One, leave the current code recommendation, the code requirements as is, requiring the minimum of three acres in the RA zoning district. Or option two, amend Chapter 2 of the Unified Land Development Code as well as Chapter 3-4 of the Henry County Code of Ordinances as follows. Add the following statement to Chapter 2, Section 2.0403 of the ULDC. See Section 3415 of the Henry County Code of Ordinances for requirements pertaining to the raising of backyard chickens on lots less than three acres. And then it additionally creates the following section in 3-4, subsection 1, Animals of the Henry County Code of Ordinances. Backyard chickens shall be, shall mean a female hen. No roosters are strictly prohibited. Only four backyard chickens shall be located on the premises of lots less than three acres. Backyard chickens may be kept outdoors only if those properties on which the animal is kept is one acre or larger. The property shall maintain, in that fashion, eliminating odors, pollution, or other negative effects resulting from the backyard chickens. And three, the backyard chickens shall not cause a nuisance. Animals must be contained within a fenced enclosure of wire, wood, stone, or other materials, which is sufficient in height and the purpose of restraining and protecting. And visible fencing is not suitable for fencing for backyard chickens. In addition to the fence, all backyard chickens shall be housed in a coop that is enclosed on all sides, including a top located in the rear of your lot. And then keeping with what the current code has in 3-14, talking about the penalties and the regulations having to meet the Health Department. Option number three is to amend Section 2-4-03 of Keeping and Raising of Livestock, basically adding in some requirements that are consistent with other jurisdictions that have ordinances that allow backyard chickens, having written consent of the property owners either for or opposed to it, require a conditional use for all properties less than three acres, and then having the property, the owner of the poultry to keep and properly maintain that in the same fashion as the previous amendment. Poultry shall mean a female hen. Again, roosters are strictly prohibited, and the keeping and raising of animals in FAL shall be subject to all regulations of the Henry County Health Department and Henry County Animal Control. Staff will entertain any comments that the board has. I'd also like to make the statement that we have received some additional comments about regarding eliminating the acreage requirement in all, to wherein one of the requirements, it has a three acre, one it has a one acre. We've received some comments that the board may want to consider eliminating the acreage requirement altogether. We'll answer any questions the board has.
Anybody have any questions for?
Yeah, Jeremy. Tell me how the four acres, I mean, the four rabbits is handled. Is that-
The way our ordinance reads currently, in the Unified Land Development Code, we distinguish a definition for pets, and it's any, any property in Henry County can have up to four domestic pets, whether that's a dog, a cat, a rabbit, or however it is. So the ordinance would allow you to have up to four pets on any given property in Henry County.
Can you write your chicken a pet?
I'm going to say yes. I'll answer for you.
The, the way the code defines a pet is it's something for companionship. So if the person makes the chicken as part of their companionship, then I'm sure we could define it as a pet as well.
If we're going to talk about taking out the one acre, I don't have a problem with that, as long as, I know even Mr. Stanley, who brought this forward, had put in there some setbacks and some other things, just to, you know, if we are dealing with smaller lots, to make sure it's reasonable. I would, is there any way, does the staff have a recommendation, if you take out the acre, is there some minimum setbacks that we ought to put in on the property lines?
If, if there's a minimum, if we take out the minimum acreage requirement, any of the coops or anything that would be built would be classified in accessory structure, and based on the ordinance would be required to be a minimum of 10 feet from all property lines. The board felt that it needed to be any further, we could definitely add some additional language into the code, requiring those structures to be further from the property lines.
Yes, sir.
It's important to note that our staff did go, and I'm just going to read these out, it'll take just a minute. Clayton County has a minimum of three acres. Cobb County has a, it has lots over two acres. They do have some other things that they put in there. Kawhita County has a minimum of five acres. DeKalb County has a minimum of two acres. Douglas County has, the way they've got it written, they've got a, they've got a lot of other things in here, and I'm trying to find the acreage, and I don't really, oh, the one full acre land must be entirely contained within the boundaries of the parcel keeping the said animals. Fayette County has five acres, and Spaulding County has three acres. So it seems that the majority of counties that surround us are over one acre. Just making that comment because staff did go out and, and I'm glad they did, give us an idea of what it is on those areas that surround Henry County. As far as the setbacks are concerned, I, I do have chickens. I understand people about the odor. I've got 18 chickens, so my 18 do have some odor, but I get 17 eggs a day out of them too, so that's pretty good. But, you know, the four chickens on an acre does not seem to be overbearing to me as far as the smell. I'm going by experience because I have chickens. But, I mean, I don't think four chickens would, would make near as much of an odor issue or a problem, so I just wanted to make that comment. Mr. Chair, thank you very much for the floor.
We have any other comments, questions from the board? If not, this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to be heard at this time? If you would, step to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Good evening. Larry Stanley, 260 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 30281. First off, gentlemen, thank you. Matter of fact, this is the third time, not the second, that this issue has come up. And for the record, at the third time, not one person has stood here before you in open session to say, hey, man, this is a terrible idea, and speak against it. So I simply would ask of this board that you adopt a resolution and the ordinance that, in best-case scenario, treat them like the rabbits, because we've got one of them too. It's a pet. They just happen to provide you with eggs, and that's the object of the game. I do support removing the acreage requirement, and if a setback of 10 feet, as he had indicated, is, is required, no problem. I had spoken about that from the start. But I would ask that you honestly think about this in terms of four animals that are your pets, whether they be rabbits, or cats, or dogs, and simply open this- pets, whether they be rabbits, or cats, or dogs, and simply open this.
(audio cuts out)[259.91][259.91]260 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[279.91][279.91]260 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[299.91][299.91]260 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[319.91][319.91]260 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[339.91][339.91]260 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[359.91][359.91]260 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[384.91][384.91]260 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[419.91][419.91]450 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[444.91][444.91]450 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[469.91][469.91]450 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[494.91][494.91]450 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[524.91][524.91]550 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[554.91][554.91]550 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[584.91][584.91]550 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[614.91][614.91]650 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[644.91][644.91]650 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[674.91][674.91]650 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[704.91][704.91]750 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[734.91][734.91]750 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[764.91][764.91]750 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[794.91][794.91]750 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[824.91][824.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[854.91][854.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[857.91][857.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[858.91][858.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[859.91][859.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[860.91][860.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[861.91][861.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[862.91][862.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[863.91][863.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[864.91][864.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[865.91][865.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[866.91][866.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[867.91][867.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[868.91][868.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[869.91][869.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[870.91][870.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[871.91][871.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[872.91][872.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[873.91][873.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[874.91][874.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[875.91][875.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[876.91][876.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[877.91][877.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[878.91][878.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[879.91][879.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[880.91][880.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[881.91][881.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[882.91][882.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[883.91][883.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[884.91][884.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[885.91][885.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[886.91][886.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[887.91][887.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[888.91][888.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[889.91][889.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[890.91][890.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[891.91][891.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[892.91][892.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[893.91][893.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[894.91][894.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[895.91][895.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[896.91][896.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[897.91][897.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[898.91][898.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[899.91][899.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[900.91][900.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[901.91][901.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[902.91][902.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[903.91][903.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[904.91][904.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[905.91][905.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[906.91][906.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[907.91][907.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[908.91][908.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[909.91][909.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[910.91][910.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[911.91][911.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[912.91][912.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[913.91][913.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[914.91][914.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[915.91][915.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[916.91][916.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[917.91][917.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[918.91][918.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[919.91][919.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[920.91][920.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[921.91][921.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[922.91][922.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[923.91][923.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[924.91][924.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[925.91][925.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[926.91][926.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[927.91][927.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[928.91][928.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[929.91][929.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[930.91][930.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[931.91][931.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[932.91][932.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[933.91][933.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[934.91][934.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[935.91][935.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[936.91][936.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[937.91][937.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[938.91][938.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[939.91][939.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[940.91][940.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[941.91][941.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[942.91][942.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[943.91][943.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[944.91][944.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[945.91][945.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[946.91][946.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[947.91][947.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[948.91][948.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[949.91][949.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[950.91][950.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[951.91][951.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[952.91][952.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[953.91][953.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[954.91][954.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[955.91][955.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[956.91][956.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[957.91][957.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[958.91][958.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[959.91][959.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[960.91][960.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[961.91][961.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[962.91][962.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[963.91][963.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[964.91][964.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[965.91][965.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[966.91][966.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[967.91][967.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[968.91][968.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[969.91][969.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[970.91][970.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[971.91][971.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[972.91][972.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[973.91][973.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[974.91][974.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[975.91][975.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[976.91][976.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[977.91][977.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[978.91][978.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[979.91][979.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[980.91][980.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[981.91][981.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[982.91][982.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[983.91][983.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[984.91][984.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[985.91][985.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[986.91][986.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[987.91][987.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[988.91][988.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[989.91][989.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[990.91][990.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[991.91][991.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[992.91][992.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[993.91][993.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[994.91][994.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[995.91][995.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[996.91][996.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[997.91][997.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[998.91][998.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[999.91][999.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1000.91][1000.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1001.91][1001.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1002.91][1002.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1003.91][1003.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1004.91][1004.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1005.91][1005.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1006.91][1006.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1007.91][1007.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1008.91][1008.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1009.91][1009.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1010.91][1010.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1011.91][1011.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1012.91][1012.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1013.91][1013.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1014.91][1014.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1015.91][1015.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1016.91][1016.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1017.91][1017.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1018.91][1018.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1019.91][1019.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1020.91][1020.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1021.91][1021.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1022.91][1022.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1023.91][1023.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1024.91][1024.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1025.91][1025.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1026.91][1026.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1027.91][1027.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1028.91][1028.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1029.91][1029.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1030.91][1030.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1031.91][1031.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1032.91][1032.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1033.91][1033.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1034.91][1034.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1035.91][1035.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1036.91][1036.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1037.91][1037.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1038.91][1038.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1039.91][1039.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1040.91][1040.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1041.91][1041.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1042.91][1042.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1043.91][1043.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1044.91][1044.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1045.91][1045.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1046.91][1046.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1047.91][1047.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1048.91][1048.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1049.91][1049.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1050.91][1050.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1051.91][1051.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1052.91][1052.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1053.91][1053.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1054.91][1054.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1055.91][1055.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1056.91][1056.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1057.91][1057.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1058.91][1058.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1059.91][1059.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1060.91][1060.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1061.91][1061.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1062.91][1062.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1063.91][1063.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1064.91][1064.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1065.91][1065.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1066.91][1066.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1067.91][1067.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1068.91][1068.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1069.91][1069.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1070.91][1070.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1071.91][1071.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1072.91][1072.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1073.91][1073.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1074.91][1074.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1075.91][1075.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1076.91][1076.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1077.91][1077.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1078.91][1078.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1079.91][1079.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1080.91][1080.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1081.91][1081.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1082.91][1082.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1083.91][1083.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1084.91][1084.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1085.91][1085.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1086.91][1086.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1087.91][1087.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1088.91][1088.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1089.91][1089.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1090.91][1090.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1091.91][1091.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1092.91][1092.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1093.91][1093.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1094.91][1094.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1095.91][1095.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1096.91][1096.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1097.91][1097.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1098.91][1098.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1099.91][1099.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1100.91][1100.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1101.91][1101.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1102.91][1102.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1103.91][1103.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1104.91][1104.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1105.91][1105.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1106.91][1106.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1107.91][1107.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1108.91][1108.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1109.91][1109.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1110.91][1110.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1111.91][1111.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1112.91][1112.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1113.91][1113.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1114.91][1114.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1115.91][1115.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1116.91][1116.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1117.91][1117.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1118.91][1118.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1119.91][1119.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1120.91][1120.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1121.91][1121.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1122.91][1122.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1123.91][1123.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1124.91][1124.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1125.91][1125.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1126.91][1126.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1127.91][1127.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1128.91][1128.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1129.91][1129.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1130.91][1130.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1131.91][1131.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1132.91][1132.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1133.91][1133.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1134.91][1134.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1135.91][1135.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1136.91][1136.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1137.91][1137.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1138.91][1138.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1139.91][1139.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1140.91][1140.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1141.91][1141.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1142.91][1142.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1143.91][1143.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1144.91][1144.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1145.91][1145.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1146.91][1146.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1147.91][1147.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1148.91][1148.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1149.91][1149.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1150.91][1150.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1151.91][1151.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1152.91][1152.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1153.91][1153.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1154.91][1154.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1155.91][1155.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1156.91][1156.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1157.91][1157.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1158.91][1158.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1159.91][1159.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1160.91][1160.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1161.91][1161.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1162.91][1162.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1163.91][1163.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1164.91][1164.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1165.91][1165.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1166.91][1166.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1167.91][1167.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1168.91][1168.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1169.91][1169.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1170.91][1170.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1171.91][1171.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1172.91][1172.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1173.91][1173.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1174.91][1174.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1175.91][1175.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1176.91][1176.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1177.91][1177.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1178.91][1178.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1179.91][1179.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1180.91][1180.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1181.91][1181.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1182.91][1182.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1183.91][1183.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1184.91][1184.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1185.91][1185.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1186.91][1186.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1187.91][1187.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1188.91][1188.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1189.91][1189.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1190.91][1190.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1191.91][1191.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1192.91][1192.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1193.91][1193.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1194.91][1194.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1195.91][1195.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1196.91][1196.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1197.91][1197.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1198.91][1198.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1199.91][1199.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1200.91][1200.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1201.91][1201.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1202.91][1202.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1203.91][1203.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1204.91][1204.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1205.91][1205.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1206.91][1206.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1207.91][1207.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1208.91][1208.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1209.91][1209.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1210.91][1210.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1211.91][1211.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1212.91][1212.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1213.91][1213.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1214.91][1214.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1215.91][1215.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1216.91][1216.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1217.91][1217.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1218.91][1218.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1219.91][1219.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1220.91][1220.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1221.91][1221.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1222.91][1222.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1223.91][1223.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1224.91][1224.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1225.91][1225.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1226.91][1226.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1227.91][1227.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1228.91][1228.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1229.91][1229.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1230.91][1230.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1231.91][1231.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1232.91][1232.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1233.91][1233.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1234.91][1234.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1235.91][1235.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1236.91][1236.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1237.91][1237.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1238.91][1238.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1239.91][1239.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1240.91][1240.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1241.91][1241.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1242.91][1242.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1243.91][1243.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1244.91][1244.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1245.91][1245.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1246.91][1246.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1247.91][1247.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1248.91][1248.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1249.91][1249.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1250.91][1250.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1251.91][1251.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1252.91][1252.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1253.91][1253.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1254.91][1254.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1255.91][1255.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1256.91][1256.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1257.91][1257.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1258.91][1258.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1259.91][1259.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1260.91][1260.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1261.91][1261.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1262.91][1262.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1263.91][1263.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1264.91][1264.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1265.91][1265.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1266.91][1266.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1267.91][1267.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1268.91][1268.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1269.91][1269.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1270.91][1270.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1271.91][1271.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1272.91][1272.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1273.91][1273.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1274.91][1274.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1275.91][1275.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1276.91][1276.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1277.91][1277.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1278.91][1278.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81.[1279.91][1279.91]850 Oak Leaf Drive, Stockbridge, 302-81. for a sign located in Norfolk Southern Railway right of way where it intersects Eagles Landing Parkway and Land Lot Two of the Second Correction Twelfth Districts outside of Eagles Landing Parkway Commission District Four, President, President Ryan Terrill, Southern Digital Display, and the reason this sounds verbatim as the last one, which it is, there's two signs involved. So, having said that, I will turn the floor over to you again, Mr. Terrill.
We're basically just submitting all the same materials for this one as we did for the, for the, for the first. In this case, the original application was submitted on August twenty seventh, two thousand twelve. Jeremy Gilbert, as the agent for Henry County Department of Planning and Zoning, denied our sign application for a sign to be located on the railroad property at the intersection Norfolk Southern's property and Eagles Landing Parkway, with the sign location being designated north of Eagles Landing Parkway. And that is lining up here, yeah. Jeremy Gilbert cited section seven point zero four, point zero four A of the Unified Land Development Code as his basis for denial. It is Southern Digital Display's position that the railroad property is unzoned property in Henry County. Southern Digital Display's basis is this, basis its position on its review of the Henry County zoning map, which does not designate the railroad property as being zoned, which is confirmed by section one point zero eight, point zero two D of the Uniform Land Development Code of Henry County, which provides that the county does not zone railroad property from the center line, but rather interprets the zoning district boundaries to run parallel to the railroad property. Since the railroad property is unzoned, section seven point zero four, zero four A of the Uniform Land Development Code of Henry County cannot be relied upon to prevent these signs in question, but we did take time to review this section, seven point zero four, point zero four A, and the plain language of this section makes clear that this section was not adopted to regulate signs on railroad property, but rather to prevent signs from extending onto adjacent property into its utility easements or similar easements and onto the public right of way so as to interfere with traffic. That's our stance as to why we feel that there can't be a denial on these sign permits.
Anybody have any questions or the advocate? Does legal counsel have any comment?
I would just add that Georgia law site allows for a restriction of signage on private or public property that results in a distraction or a dangerous condition for the driving public. And so that is a separate statement under state law that you all have available and are bound to consider as you review this application as well as the previous one.
We have a resolution in the book that will either overturn administrative denial and approve the sign permit application or we can uphold the administrative denial of the sign permit application.
I move to uphold the denial, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion to uphold the denial, we have a second, have a second from District Three in further discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move, thank you so much.
Thank you. I don't know where, should I drop these somewhere?
Sir? Public hearing, request to consider adoption of the two thousand thirteen Annual Action Plan as part of the FY two thousand twelve, two thousand sixteen Consolidated Plan and authorization to submit the plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Shannon Buckner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On this evening, we are holding the second public hearing and the final public hearing for the FY two thousand thirteen Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program. At this public hearing, we are looking to approve the FY thirteen Annual Action Plan for submittal to the U.S. Department of Urban, of Housing and Urban Development for their review. This is a prerequisite for receiving funds under the HUD formula grant programs. Henry County is required to submit an annual action plan for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, being year two of its five-year consolidated plan for FY two thousand twelve through two thousand sixteen. The FY two thousand thirteen Annual Action Plan describes specific projects in which the county will utilize CDBG funds to carry out priorities as established in the county's FY two thousand twelve through two thousand sixteen Consolidated Plan. As required in the Citizens Participation Plan, staff has published public notice of the draft plan and has allowed public comment in an excess of the required thirty days, which started on Friday, May thirty first. Copies of the comments received have been included in your package. Most comments were requests for additional funding, personal testimonies related to a specific agency, or written response to the notification that an application did not meet requirements to be recommended for funding.
Anybody have any questions? If not, this is public hearing, would anybody like to be heard at this time for any reason? I noticed on the recommendations, we have option one, option two.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
I favor option two because it, it appears to me that it, it would be more fair and equitable when you get to the public services. If you look at option one, Connecting Henry would get forty-nine thousand seven oh four, and then Hands of Hope, Friends House, and Friend Circuit would get thirty, thirty, and thirty-six. I, I would recommend option two, which we discussed this at our, at our last
We did.
public hearing, that all four of these are good items, and one is really, no, offers less service than the other, but I would just feel comfortable myself, and I would be inclined to vote for option two instead of option one. Option one on all the rest of them is the same as option two, option two just carries over.
Yes, sir.
If I understand it correctly.
That is correct.
That, that's the only, the only things I see there. So the only two we got left for fiscal year twelve is sixty-two thousand five hundred, is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Does any commissioner have any comments or questions?
Shannon, going back to your first list, option one, I think you stated to us earlier that these people had asked for this amount of monies. So, in turn, if we do what the chairman wants to do, are we giving one organization more money than they actually need?
In the case of option one, all of the organizations are recommended for the, if I could start over with that. In the case of option one, Hands of Hope, as well as a Friends House specifically, both requested thirty thousand initially with the application. Connecting Henry, their request was, I believe, sixty-four or sixty-five, sixty-four or sixty-six thousand. I'm not for certain on the exact number. Haven House, their initial request was for twenty-three five. They followed that request with a written letter for additional funding. And that's how we kinda came with the, the totals for option one, staying within the fifteen percent limit as permitted for public service. So.
I think what he was asking, I need to ask you too, if we gave Hands of Hope thirty-six thousand four twenty-six, they only asked for thirty thousand, that means that, what, they couldn't use the other six thousand dollars?
Not necessarily, sir. Since the last meeting on June eighteenth, we have received written letters of comments, they are included in your packet, from both Hands of Hope and a Friends House requesting additional funding. So I believe both of those organizations would be in support of option two with accepting the additional thirty, excuse me, the additional sixty thou- six thousand. And representatives from both organizations are present.
Okay, thank you, anybody else have any questions?
So what you're telling me, that all the organizations are good with this option two?
Connecting Henry? Yes, sir.
We have a motion, correction, we have a I have a question.
Yes, ma'am, could you tell me, could other people qualify for this list, or what are the qualifications?
At this time, we have closed applications for FY two thousand thirteen. As you'll notice, under public facility, we do have listed for Henry County and municipalities two hundred eight thousand, eight thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars, in which we will request proposals from the county and the municipalities within the county for eligible projects for public facility and improvements. But other than that, we are no longer accepting applications for FY For public service, correct.
We have a resolution, and we need to make a note, and I don't see where we have a choice, but we can make a note that we
There are two resolutions, one for option one and one for option two.
Mr. Chairman, I'll entertain, go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and move forward with option two.
We have a motion, option two resolution, they have a second? Have a second from District Five, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, so move, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna say this before we move on, did Todd Edwards, did Mr. Edwards, any representative from the ACCG come in here? I wanna make sure, I don't want you to sit through all this. Let's move down to the resolution request award of a bid for recertification and repair of laser and radar speed detection devices. Major Mark Amerman.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members. Yeah, it's time to get a new contract for recertification of our lasers and radars. Current one expired June thirtieth of this year. Lasers and radars are a valuable tool for law enforcement officers to detect speed of violators, assist in reducing traffic accidents, and warn citizens of their speed certification and operation. These devices are vital to assess prosecution, education of the citizens. Bid was done through purchasing, East Georgia Communications had the lowest bid, and our recommendation is to award a contract to them.
Where does these funds come from?
They are budgeted.
Okay. We have a resolution in the book, as published. We have a motion to move to approve the resolution, surrounding, have a second by District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, so move, thank you. Let's move down to the resolution request award of a bid to purchase nineteen twenty-eight sirens. Mr. Don Ash.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and Board of Commissioners. Through some grant funding that was secured by Commissioner Bowman, I believe you were a part of the delegation that were, were able to approach David Scott's office in Washington to receive some funding, and we received funding for a two-part system, one being some emergency warning tornado sirens. The second part would be the second item, which was a reverse notification system. This program would provide an additional nineteen tornado sirens throughout the county. We did take seal bids, and five vendors responded. Sirens for the city of Jonesville was the lowest and most acceptable bid of seventeen point, seventeen nine per siren. We have available in federal funds, two, two hundred fifty-three thousand one hundred twenty-five. The local match for that would be eighty-four, three seventy-five, and we're gonna use some additional PPA funds of two, twenty-six hundred dollars, which would come to a total cost of three, three hundred forty thousand one hundred, three hundred and forty thousand one hundred dollars. And we recommend award to sirens to the city on this project.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I know several months ago, we had several citizens around District Two, eighty-one, where eighty-one breaks off from Old Griffin, I mean, correction, oh, four-one-nineteen. And I thought, I was told, I saw on the list, that they would be putting one, when you, when you're crossing over the railroad, going eighty-one at First Subdivision to the left, it would be a siren early warning put at lot one hundred or but I noticed on here, I, I don't, I don't see that on the list. I don't know if that was the next round, or
In this first round, we had a total of twenty-five sites approved, and we used the first nineteen additional sites, and we broke it up by district. We tried to distribute them through districts.
Okay, have you got the list in front of you?
I do.
Have you got, could you see something that says one hundred Village or Hampton Village?
I show one at one hundred Kentwood Springs Drive and Labrador Trace Drive in Hampton.
Okay, that's the one I saw, so when do you think that one would be there?
Oh, if, if the ward is made tonight, it is our goal to have these sirens installed and within the next, I believe, one hundred and twenty days for the project.
Okay, we have a resolution in the book.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, and just for records, I'm gonna tell you, the federal funds is totaled two hundred fifty-three, one twenty-five, and a local budgeted amount of eighty-four, three seventy-four, available in capital lease fund, additional two thousand six hundred from two thousand twelve grants. I just wanna spread the monies across the minutes, so we have a
Just, just for a point of reference, the reason we're using the twenty-six hundred dollars of extra PPA funds, we were short in getting the number nineteen siren, and instead of returning the funds back to the federal government, we're gonna use some additional funds of PPA to match out for number nineteen.
Okay, so the total price of all the funding is three hundred and forty thousand one hundred for nineteen sirens. So I just wanna spread that across the minutes. So we do have a motion from District Three, we have a second from District Two. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, so move. Next, we have a resolution award of a bid to purchase emergency, non-emergency notification system. Mr. Ash.
This project is probably a project that we're more excited about, in conjunction with the early warning sirens, this is a reverse notification where our citizens will have an opportunity to register their cell phone, their home phone, and personal devices to get early warning information such as tornado warnings, emergency messages that we may need to get out on behalf of the county. This was also included in the package that was seeked by our commission, delegation through David Scott's office. We did send out seal bids and received seal bids from multiple vendors, and we're requesting to award to Emergency Management Telecommunications of Melbourne, Florida. They were determined a high-scoring, most acceptable package for us. The project cost is nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. The breakdown on this project would be federal funds of fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety-six thou- ninety-six dollars and twenty-five cent, a local match of four thousand nine hundred ninety dollars and seventy-five cent. The match will be made through a capital lease balance we have, as well as some interest income on that capital lease. We are recommending award to Emergency Management Telecommunications of Melbourne, Florida for this project.
We have a motion in the book, correction, we have a resolution in the book, have a motion from District Two. We have a second from Sir?
I said move to approve, I saw a second.
I'm sorry, we have a motion for approved District Two, have a second from District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, I'll be quicker next time.
Thank you.
Next, we have the resolution request award of a bid to purchase two remounted ambulance units. Chief Brad Johnson.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Tonight, I'm seeking permission or approval to purchase two remounted ambulance units. It's a twofold resolution that includes the purchase of these ambulances through lease purchase and through a budget amendment from the fiscal year two thousand thirteen budget. We went through competitive process through purchasing, had three vendors with positive responses. Our recommendations go to the lowest bidder, one thousand and thirty-nine dollars per unit, with a rebate of twelve hundred dollars per unit for early payment. Leads a total of one hundred ninety-seven thousand six hundred seventy-eight dollars for the total purchase. Twenty-four thousand two hundred ten dollars and thirty-three cents will be taken from the forty-hour week line item for fiscal year, fiscal year thirteen, from savings from last year's line item. And that's what a resolution for the purchase plus the amendment to move funding to that lease purchase funding line item.
Anybody have any questions? We have a motion, correction, we have a resolution in the book. Have a motion to approve from District Two, have a second for District Three. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a ward to bid some concrete drainage pipes. Mr. Terry McNichols.
Good afternoon, Board, we are requesting award of our contract to purchase concrete drainage pipe. As you know, our department uses pipe for various county projects. Having a contract for these items allows quick access to the product without the necessity of bidding each time the product is required, and guaranteed prices will remain firm for the contract price. Seal bids were, were sent out. We did have one responsive bidder, and we recommend award to Foley Concrete Company of Noonan, Georgia, as the overall low bidder.
We have a resolution in the book. We have a, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Terry, we only hit one bid?
Yes, sir. I thought the same thing, so check with purchasing. We did send it out to several other, even a local company, and, well, Rinker and Hanson. We did get one response back from Hanson. That bid was incomplete, but no response from Rinker.
Are the prices in, I'm sorry, are the prices in line with what we've been paying in the past? What I'm looking for is, do we wanna put it back out for rebid because we didn't get but one price?
Well, actually, this was the second time we put it out. The first time, we didn't get any responses.
We didn't get it.
So we put it back out. We put it back out, and we sent it to some individuals. We, we identified some people in some county because we thought we weren't sure it got to the right places. So we sent it back out the second time through purchasing and said, hey, make sure these people are aware of this bid, and we did, did receive that bid back from Foley.
Sorry, thank you.
Good question.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? If not, we have a resolution in the book to authorize this expenditure. We have a motion from District Four, have a second from District Two. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Next, we, thank you so much, Terry. Next, we have consent agendas, agenda. We have ten items, and before we vote on this agenda, the chair will provide opportunity to add to or delete. I would like to delete item one and put that back by itself because we have a representative from the Quonis Club that would like to make some comments, and through the courtesy I suggested, that I would, I would take this out. Unless somebody has any other additions or removal, I would like for the board to consider reviewing as published. And it has been published, and it's got details, and it has, it has all the associated paperwork that goes with it, and you're bounder. And normally, a consent item is, number one is, it doesn't cost money, per se, and it has to be something that the board would unanimously approve in any event. Now, once it's on a consent, one, one commissioner can take it off. If one commissioner, like I just indicated, wants to take one off, it comes off, and it goes back on the agenda for the normal discussion. And I'm taking this off because, like I said, we have a rep that would like to speak. So having said that, if somebody would
Can I interrupt just a second?
You can.
Just for clarification, Latonya, I'm a member of the Henry County Quonis Club. Does it matter if I sit up here or not?
The acceptance of the donation?
Right.
No, there's no conflict.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, if somebody would consider making a motion to approve all the consent agendas as published, with the exception of number one.
Hood, or maybe you, or the clerk or important member can read, just for the record, what those serial items are, just to tie it all
You think I should read all these?
Yes, but, yes.
Okay, just for record, found on the consent agenda, resolution request and approval of a license for space agreement for the National Night Out two thousand thirteen campaign. The board has religiously approved, approved that for many years. The request for approval of a memorandum, an agreement with the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission for office space in Aubrey Hallary Building at three thirty-three Phillips Drive, and I put this on here because unless we're gonna make them move out, they're there now, then we're gonna obviously extend that like we always do. Request for authorization to accept a donation of six helmets from the City of Charlotte Police Department, or City, I suppose that's the police department. That's, we just accepting that by consent. Request for authorization to accept a donation from the NAIFA Southern Crescent to the Henry County Police Special Operations Division. And it's a donation, and I know that the board would accept the donation. They have never failed to accept. Number six is resolution request acceptance of the Georgia Department of Human Services operating grant for Connecting Henry. That's a contract that's been approved since I can remember. And I'm, the, the deal is, it has to take unanimous vote to, to make all this happen. Resolution request approval of a purchase order for the purchase of food products for use in preparing meals for the senior center cafeteria and home delivery meals. Needless to say, we're gonna, we're gonna buy food, that's, that's a given. Resolution request approval of the fiscal year two thousand fourteen contract with Atlanta Regional Commission. Resolution request approval of a warranty service self-maintenance agreement. That's Mr. Rayner, and that's an agreement that we have annually. Request authorization to surplus and sale a nineteen ninety-one Chevrolet Caprice Police Cruiser Dragster. And that's, that's kinda a no-brainer, too. So having said that, that's the nine I've listed, if somebody would move and consent agenda, that we approve those.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Have a second from District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, so move. Now, I would like to receive presentation from request for authorization to accept a donation of two prescription drug take-back receptacles from the Henry County Quonis Club, Major Mark Amerman. And if you would, state your name and address, and this is Tony Moore, you can state your name and address as well, and who You can state your name and address as well and who you represent. Thank you.
Mark Amerman, Henry County Police Department.
Tony Moore, a member of the Quanis Club of Henry County. The... About a year and a half ago, it came to my attention that after getting on the State Board of Pharmacy, the problem with this state has, and especially Henry County, in leftover medication we have at home. I went through my medicine, being a pharmacist and a State Board member, to prove that I had a clean medicine cabinet, and Nancy and I came through with fifteen prescriptions that were outdated and nowhere to dispose of. Looking into it, we found that their DEA does have a program out there. It's very strict. We would not be here tonight if it wasn't for this man to my right. He was able to handle this in about three months in record time. Georgia, Henry County ranks in the top five in most areas for the most controlled substances prescribed in the state. It ranks with number of prescriptions written for controlled substances. And as I said, eighty percent of the medication the kids pass around come from sources at mom and dad's house. You cannot dispose of any of it. Even a multivitamin is considered toxic waste by federal standards. So people are stuck. Now, there are outlets around to dispose of non-controlled substances, but we're concerned the top, out of the top ten prescribed drugs in the state of Georgia, seven of them are controlled substances. So we got the tops, basically, seven, seventy percent of the top ten drugs, nothing to do with them. Henry County will be one of the first counties in the state and one of the first jurisdictions in the state to have the disposal boxes. Where the Quanis Club is proud underwrite this, we pledge to produce as many of these boxes as you and the police deem necessary in this county, as well as to work on publicizing this with whatever it takes so that people can bring their expired drugs. The only thing they cannot turn in to us are syringes. There's no federal guidelines as to any way to take syringes. I'd like the majors to make a little brief statement.
Just want to thank the Quanis Club and Tony. Tony's the one who brought this idea up. If it wasn't the police departments, Tony brought this to the police department and wanted it done. So without him bringing us to our attention, it really wasn't on our forefront, even though it's such a huge problem. We did jump through a lot of hoops. DEA does have a program. I had to write to the DEA. We had to get approval for them. We jumped through all their hoops, came up with a policy, actually talked to the postmaster. He's the one who donated the boxes. And of course, it was Quanis that refurbished the post office boxes to contain these. We're going to start out with two. One of the rules is they have to be in a secure location. We're going to use the North Precinct, and we're going to use headquarters because they can be secured. Of course, people will be able to come into any of those precincts from eight AM to five, Monday through Friday, with exceptional holidays, and come and drop off any expired prescription drugs they may have without any questions asked. Our personnel that goes into different precincts that normally picks up different evidence and drugs, that'll be part of their duties to also check the mailboxes, the routine that they do there. The plan so far is to continue, see how this goes, maybe even add more boxes, but they do have to be in a secure location. Maybe we could use a sheriff's office or something like that, but we'll see how it goes for this. Again, just want to thank the Quanis Club for paying to get this done and making it happen.
The drugs will be incinerated, by the way.
Any drugs that we get will be disposed of the same way we would do any other illicit drugs that we would find. So there's not going to incur any more costs than normal cost of doing business that we do already.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. We have a resolution in the book. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners to accept two prescription drug take-back receptacles from the Henry County Quanis Club for the acceptance of unwanted prescription drug for the community. If somebody would... We have a move to approve from District Three. We have a second from District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So move. Thank you so much.
If it's possible, we brought one of the drug boxes if we could take a picture with the Commissioners.
What now?
I brought one of the drug boxes if we could take a picture with Tony and the Commissioner.
Oh, you did? You brought one here?
I brought one here.
Okay. Ms. Julie, would you be so kind as to...
Those are national work.
They took your name off the card. I saw your name on the card.
I noticed that, and I wasn't going to beat it. It would be...
Hey. Okay. Let's move down to non-consent agenda items, request for approval of the lease agreement for the Ellwood Fairview Police Precinct. That's we move to exhibit number twenty-four in your book. The presenter would be the major. You're going to present the Ellwood Fairwood Police Precinct?
Yes, Chairman and Board Members. May of two thousand and eleven, after a request from citizens of District Five, the police precinct was established in Ellwood and Fairview to display a police presence for the citizens to easily speak to a police officer. A convenient location accessible for the precinct was the Palisades Shop in Ellwood, Georgia, where old Publix used to be. Upon us moving in, the original lease agreement was a thousand and fifty dollars. Right now, that contract ended in May thirty-first of this year. Right now, the police department's operating under a proposed lease. This proposed lease will be, took effect June first, two thousand and thirteen, in terms for thirteen months, thus ending June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. So it'll now be on the fiscal year. The rent has gone up twenty-four dollars and fifty cents, and that'll be a thousand and seventy-four dollars, with an option to renew where it will go up again seven dollars to a thousand eighty-one fifty. But I think the real questions would be...
According to this right here, the proposed rent went up seven dollars a month.
That would be for the additional one. The proposed one, from the original, when we started in May of two thousand and eleven, was a thousand fifty.
But was it part of that?
Now, the proposed one that we're operating, we haven't paid yet for June, but we're operating on now, will go up twenty-four dollars. So it went from a thousand fifty to a thousand and seventy-four fifty. That's an increase of twenty-four dollars and fifty cents. That's what we want to operate under now.
Does any Commissioner have any questions surrounding this lease? If not, we have a resolution that would authorize this, if somebody would move. We have a motion, do we have a second from District Four? Discussion, there's a very lengthy agreement, a lease agreement, and I'm going to ask Council, has she had the opportunity to review it?
Yes, sir, I have.
Okay. You know I wouldn't sign it without you looking at it anyway, so I just want to make sure for record that you've looked at it. So all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, so move. Resolution question, approval to hire part-time CNAs and approve the budget transfer. Ms. Reed. Good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Board. As you stated, I'm here to seek approval for a transfer of funds in our existing budget. Currently, under a contracted service, we'd like to transfer that to salaries for the purpose of hiring five part-time, no benefit certified nursing assistants. In the past, we've used a temporary agency for that, and we feel that by using our employees that we screen, interview, and hire, that we would have a better quality assurance with those employees, as well as cost savings. To pay a tip service, we pay seventeen dollars an hour, and our quoted salary is significantly less than that. So we would be able to have more hours of service for the same amount of money.
This is part-time?
Yes, sir. Part-time, no benefits.
Okay, this is not like permanent part-time?
There is a cap on hours that we would not exceed, and we would not exceed the current line item amount in the budget.
So what I'm saying is, you know, we've got some permanent part-time people that work thirty hours a week.
Yes, sir.
They work it every week. So that's full-time part-time. So what would these people be classified as?
They would be part-time, permanent part-time.
Part-time.
With a cap on their hours.
Not full-time, part-time, but just part-time?
Yes, sir, not seasonal, permanent part-time.
Oh, permanent part-time. So now, are we looking at, are we looking at thirty hours a week?
No, sir.
What are we looking at?
We're looking at a cap of seventeen hours per week.
Seventeen.
And if needed, since they would be relieving our full-time CNAs, there might be an opportunity one week, it might be a cap of twenty-five, and none the next week.
The resolution calls for twenty, a cap of twenty hours per week?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And this is within the authorization of the budget?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay.
And I've made sure of that.
Yeah, so it is limited to twenty hours. Okay, somebody?
Move to approve?
Wait a minute, we've... Yes, sir.
Just for clarification on the question for Diane. The question is to permanent part-time. The definition of permanent would be that they would work every week twenty hours, not some weeks fifteen, some twenty-five, but on average, you know, instead of an average of twenty per week, permanent part-time as the definition is that they are going to work twenty per week, every week, fifty-two weeks. So that would be the definition that we're looking at. Regular, regular part-time.
I would like the flexibility if they are not needed in a week.
Why don't we just do this then? Based on what I'm saying, it would be full-time, part-time, not to exceed twenty hours a week, and that would cover the financial obligation in the budget.
Yes, sir.
So how would we put that in the resolution? How would you suggest we put not to exceed twenty hours?
If we're trying to get, if you're trying to obtain a classification at the same time, it should specify if it's going to be twenty hours per week. If it's less than or more than, or whatever else, that leaves it open as a part-time position that way. What we tried to do is define it as a set number of hours, ends up putting it into a regular part-time versus an unscheduled number of hours.
Okay, I'm going to let the resolution stand as published, and it says, whereas Henry County Services desires to hire part-time, temporary certified nursing assistants. So that right there in itself would limit it to part-time only by definition. So if somebody would move in that direction? We have a motion from District Three. Do we have a second from District One? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So move. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next we have a resolution request authorization of Blue Cross Blue Shield to administer and assist in the compliance of Cobra services for fiscal year twenty thirteen, Tara. Evan Hard. Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the Board. I come before you today for approval for Blue Cross Blue Shield of Georgia to administer the Cobra benefits for the FY twenty thirteen, fourteen year. The county currently has a monthly cost of five hundred dollars and eighty-nine cents for ADP to administer Cobra program. Blue Cross Blue Shield has agreed to offer these services at no direct cost to the county. And the reason it says no direct cost is there is an administrative fee that goes along with Cobra, and that is approved by the Department of Labor for administering of Cobra programs to charge up to a hundred and two percent of the cost, and that is industry standard.
So we've been paying five hundred and some odd dollars a month, now we're going, Blue Cross Blue Shield are going to administer this for free?
Yes, sir. That's correct. At no direct cost to the county.
And the only thing they require is...
Is you sign the agreement.
Is a fifteen-page contract.
Yes. It's only one page you have to sign for.
I had to throw that out because we have a resolution in the book to allow Cobra administration by Blue Cross Blue Shield, and there'd be no cost to the county for this services. Have a motion from District Two. Have a second from District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Request to amend the code of ordinance by adding an emergency management service ordinance.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners again. This is just an update for our emergency management ordinance. As you realize, I serve as the emergency manager and emergency management agency head for Henry County. Our role is to provide and support and logistical support to help our community respond and return to normal after disaster. Typically, we'll do this resolution every time we have a change in our leadership, and this is pulled straight from the recommendations of ACCG to update our ordinance related to emergency management.
Careful reviewed this document. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Ash? If not, does somebody move with...
Move to approve the resolution in the book as published. I have a motion from District Three. We have a second from District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. If you oppose it, raise your right hand. No opposition, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have resolution request for authorization to accept fiscal year twenty thirteen, local maintenance and improvement grant, LMI. I think we, I think, I think y'all call this LMIG?
LMIG, Local Maintenance Improvement Grant.
Yes, sir.
Yes, GDOT accepted applications for our FY twenty thirteen, LMIG or Lamig Improvement Grant, December of twenty thirteen. The chairman signed the application on December seventeenth for the projects to be completed by July of twenty fourteen. We have now received those funds from GDOT in the amount of one million, four hundred and three thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-eight cents. This match does require thirty percent, I mean, this grant does require a thirty percent match, which equates to four hundred and twenty-one thousand, sixty dollars and ninety-four cents. The county will meet this through our in-kind labor services. The labor for the resurfacing, the money for that labor is in our twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen DOT general fund budget. So our recommendation is to receive this money, take this one.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You said it was one million, five hundred, sixteen thousand, six oh one ninety-six.
This, this one is the December one. It's one million, four hundred and three, five thirty-six. thirty-six. I've got another one, that's for FY fourteen, that is the million five, they give us a little more money in the next one.
Okay, so the one you're talking about is one four oh three five thirty-six forty-eight, and thirty percent is four twenty-one oh six.
Yes, sir.
And we have all the associated projects that will be used for that, that's in the book?
Yes, sir, it's in the book, the projects that we will resurface with that money.
Okay, we have a motion, correction, we have a resolution in the book, resolution authorizing acceptance of the Georgia Department of Local Maintenance and Improvement Grants. Our portion would be, the total grant would be one point four million, our part would be four hundred and twenty-one thousand. Does somebody move in that direction? We have a motion from District Two.
Second.
Have a second from District, was that you?
Yeah, I made a, I made a motion.
We had a motion from District Five, second from District Two. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Number six, request authorization to submit an LMIG grant, and this is the one.
...turn his vision into reality, vision into reality. In nineteen fifty-nine, Disneyland over in California, over in LA opened. Then, a few years later, Walt Disney envisioned another and even larger Disney theme park. He laid the groundwork, but he died in nineteen sixty-six. This was almost five years before Disney World opened down in Orlando, Florida. A gentleman named Mike Vance, who's the creative director for Disney World, for that development at the time, overheard a kid saying to his dad, he said, "Isn't it too bad Walt Disney did not live to see this? Isn't it too bad that Walt Disney did not live to see this?" And then Vance replied, replied to the little girl and her dad, he said, "Oh, but he did. That's why it's here. He did see it, and that's why it's here today." Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners, with my utmost respect, when you received your SPhlophil project list, did you at that time have a Catalina experience? When you saw the countywide projects, when you saw the district projects, did you have a Catalina experience? Did you see beyond what is there today? Did you see that? Did you see the possibility of? Did you see the possibility of what is not there and weigh it for the possibility that what could be there? Could be there. I know for one thing, just from some of the comments, some of the things I've heard around, that some of you might not had that vision when we started talking about the Aquatic Center or the Amphitheater, mostly the Aquatic Center. You see it right now, I want you to, you don't have to close your eyes, but envision, envision within yourself at a place, a safe place, not too far from here, not even a half mile from here. You see an aquatic center, see a big beautiful building, an icon for Henry County, sitting on a hillside, reflecting in a lake that's in front of it. Or maybe the amphitheater on the other side, reflecting in the lake. Or maybe you see the fireworks up, reflecting in the lake. Or you see a place you can envision for all our swim teams. Yes, female swim teams, they're going to be gearing up so they can use this facility. You will not see this facility ever empty. And you see one day, you see it full of laughter, full of crying where somebody might have lost the swim meet, but you see things happening, it's alive, it's alive. And that's all because certain people were able to see beyond themselves. They had a vision, they had a vision for something to begin, something, something big. So I want you to think from here out, think on the SPOLOSPOR list as you go and talk about it in a few moments, I also want you to think about the Aquatic Center. Catalina, Catalina moment that you might have. Again, you're going to see this all day, since I've mentioned it, if you've been listening, you're going to see that all day long. You're going to envision a place up on that hill, a place that's being used for all of Henry Countyans. And I want you to consider that, consider just a small amount, small amount we need to make this thing happen. And I think it's in your control now. So I'm going to yield the rest of my time to Mr. John Turpin. Thank you.
Good morning, gentlemen. Good day, Mr. Steve, thank you so much. And thank you for your service, Dr. Lee. These are the most revised versions. I've obviously spent a lot of time with people over the last two and a half, three months, and been very inspired by the process and very fortunate to be standing here. There's two versions here because I've tried to, this is nothing more than a recommendation long-term, but to show you gentlemen that we've been thoughtful in our selection of the site on the backside of the lake and why we've wanted to be there. Like Steve said, we've designed, y'all have all seen designs by now, a beautiful, world-class, family-focused, competitive swim center. It will definitely be a beacon on the hill, and it will attract swimmers, not just statewide, but regionally. We will have the capacity for hosting international caliber events. We've really gone above and beyond. The first page shows the passive parks, and we've added additional parking at the request of some of the commissioners, showing the driving range as green parking, where you would actually park on the grass for events, and it would have either gravel or concrete paths that you drive on, and then you would actually park on the grass. We're showing the second fairway turned into parking, also green parking. That is, it's a good thing, the water runoff isn't as extreme, and since, you know, we'd be looking at an event calendar of say forty or fifty events annually, the grass will hold up and it'll be very pretty. So you can see that just on this footprint alone, we've created twenty-four, 2,450 parking spots to service the amphitheater and to service events at the Aquatic Center, as well as servicing events that could be at the passive park. You know, a passive park is a park that has no programming, it has no soccer, no football fields, no baseball fields. There can be open fields for playing some pickup sports, but it's a park that anyone can enjoy of any age. The walking trails that are on here, which are currently there, they're called cart paths. What we're showing on the drawings here roughly equals seven miles of walking paths and jogging paths. The lifestyle center that this will become is amazing. The energy that we've got beside us and behind us for this initiative is growing daily, and we're just really, really, really dedicated to this site. We have the arduous task now, we've done really well on a grassroots level, and in August we have presentations, we're going before a bunch of corporate sponsors for naming opportunities as well as foundations, and that arduous task starts with a foundation. And that foundation, we're looking for you guys to lay that foundation, and that foundation is this location. And having a strong foundation like this will allow us to attract the very best to become our corporate sponsors, to attract the very best to make donations and things like that. If, you know, I've said it throughout the process, you know, we've been offered other parcels of land, and those parcels of land would, you know, would be great, but essentially we would be building a strip mall with a pool in it. We know the issues that our county has with sprawl, and having a true lifestyle center and creating this synergy fixes more than just the demand for swimming. You know, it's geographically centered, it is just perfect in every way. I've driven up and down the county, I've met with leaders in education, leaders in business, and the amount of support for this project is phenomenal. So with that being said, I don't know where our time is at, but I'd really like to just open up for any questions or opposition. I'm here to answer questions and deal with any opposition there might be to this.
Yes, sir.
My question is, is that, Joan, we've talked about this, you understand, you know, and by the way, I have received a lot of public comment on this, I've even had neighbors, as I've walked the neighborhood, pull me aside and tell me what they've done, and I want to give you a chance after I ask my question, to kind of tell me the buy-in you've had from some community people who are also business executives as well as other people and what they're trying to do to move the ball forward. But you're not asking us, because I think we have to be very careful, you know, SPOLOSPOR money is very unique on how it has to be structured, because there's, I know staff has even expressed to us concern about it being a gratuity if it is perceived as us giving something. Y'all are not looking for us to build this swim center.
No, we will, we will be raising ten million dollars. I'm literally, like I said earlier, we're just looking for the foundation. We're going to build the walls, the windows, the pools, everything, we're going to build it.
You're looking for help with support structures like parking lots and other things.
Yes, and on that individual sheet, that's our original proposal, which Leonard Moreland graciously helped me craft. You know, the concept is for 1.5 million dollars to go toward infrastructure, which would primarily be our parking lot. And then 3.5 million would go to debt service on the acreage that we're looking at.
And the reason you've kind of laid out this concept is because a parking lot could also be a multi-use facility for the amphitheater and some of the other things.
Correct, it would also service.
That I laid out here. It could be for other county benefit.
Correct, it would also service the Upper Pond, which is awesome space for having festivals and such. I can envision, I can have a Catalina moment myself and see tents surrounding that lake in a Dogwood Festival style setting. You know, this is, you know.
Is it appropriate to share who some of the people who've put forward, who they want to support? Because I didn't know if that, I didn't want to oversketch who I've been pulled aside and talking to.
Yeah, our strongest, and he was scheduled to be here last night, obviously the, y'all's schedule didn't allow, we were told that we would end up on Wednesday, but Bill Strang is the president of TOTO of the Americas, which TOTO is the world's largest manufacturer of plumbing fixtures. So they've already made a commitment to do all of our plumbing fixtures. Everything will be low-flow, environmentally rated, beautiful, wonderful stuff. This site will be visited, like, you know, we're really pushing for elite certification, we're going to have cisterns on the property, we're going to capture our rainwater for irrigation. This aquatic center will, people will travel long distances to see this aquatic facility. In our endeavors, we travel to roughly fourteen different facilities, and, you know, in studying what's great, what's not so great about other facilities. And so we've put a lot of hard work and time into designing the very best. So yeah, Bill Strang of TOTO is on board, he'll be on our Board of Directors, he's on an international level, a huge influence. He travels the world speaking of environmental impact. All the plumbing fixtures that are at the airport are TOTO, and they can, they know exactly how much water they've saved the city of Atlanta through their different fixtures and stuff. But the list goes on and on, we've had huge in-kind donations from members of the Chick-fil-A family, the Cathys, and we're growing every day. My phone rings and our email box stays full. There's a lot of energy toward this, and a lot of it, what I'm really loving to see is the folks that know that they're doing this for their children and for their grandchildren. Sometimes, you know, not everything we do is obviously for ourselves, but it's cool to see people that say, "Hey, I want, I want my kids swimming, I want my grandkids swimming," so real inspired by that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Couple of things, you and I had lunch several months ago.
Yes, sir.
To speak about this Aquatic Center, and when we had lunch that day, I'm pretty sure you told me that you were going to raise all the funds, that you were not looking for any monies from the county. That's what we talked about, because you had said, "I can make all this happen, I'm looking for property."
And we'll.
And we talked about the other, and now we're, see, everybody's making a run on SPOLOSPOR. Hey, listen, I think it's, this is probably the best thing I've ever seen for a county and a community, I think it's awesome. But I do, you know, I just want to be sure that we understand, like Brian had stated, we have to be very careful with SPOLOSPOR funding, or we won't get it passed. And if we don't get it passed, everybody loses at the end of the day. That's the one thing. The other thing is that when we had talked earlier, you know, I told you that I was in favor of it, I would love to see it happen. We also talked about the location, and the only one on this board that took a whole lot of heat that's currently sitting here is me for the purchase of that property. So I'm going to do a little history lesson. ARC came down and told Henry County that by 2030 we'd have over 400,000 people, and that our court system, judicial system, and other systems could not handle that load with the court system that's currently in the city of McDonough on the square. Property was bought for future use for government facilities in that it has to be within the county seat, which is the city of McDonough, which what that is, and it had to be a certain amount of property in order to do that. And looking at your plan, I don't see the room for the judicial centers and the other things that would have to go.
That's on the.
I see your 50,000-foot buildings, but that's not, that's not a judicial center like we envision, okay? I understand what you got, but looking at it from a contractor's standpoint and understanding what you have to do, I mean, we would have to have a parking garage and other things in order to maintain what we would have to maintain. City of McDonough, the court system cannot handle what they have now, they're barely getting by now. I can't imagine it with a double population. That's why I mentioned to you that we did have other properties, and, you know, that's, the strip center mode is a little bit of a cut, because, you know, the Y really wanted that 20 acres, but they didn't want it enough to step up for it. I'm on board, I'd love to see this happen, I really would, but I don't, the only way that I could actually support it is with a master plan that actually put in place a parking garage, the court system, and the things that we would have to have that it was purchased for. And we took a whole lot of heat, I mean, like I said, I'm the only one left, but at the end of the day, we took a lot of heat for buying something for the future, for expansion of things. And so I want to be sure that we don't go out and just put something in place and take away the opportunity when I'm not even here, you know, 20 years from now, or 15 years from now, in order to do that. I do go on record saying I am in favor, however, it would have to be in such a way that what the property was purchased for would be able to do it, and not from, this, this concept drawing's nice, but I'm talking about a fully certified engineer saying, "Okay, you need this size building, you need this size parking garage, you need this size entrance, you need all of the above," and therefore I might could get on board with where it's going. But you and I talked about it, and I told you, I didn't know that I could support that particular spot, but I could support everything else. And man, this is beautiful. Quality of life issues would be awesome, this would be something that, that, you know, would put us, would rank us with anybody. And, you know, having people and knowing some people with the amphitheater and the amphitheater business, it would be, it would be pretty good for Henry County, for our local businesses as well as for our citizens to enjoy. But I just wanted to go on record as stating what it was bought for, why it was bought, and what we would need to do, and the fact that when we met, you said, "I don't need any money, I'll raise all the money, I just need the land." So I'm a little bit perplexed by the, you know, by the five million dollars. I think when we start looking at something like that, we could, we could create an issue that we can't get around, and we don't get anything. That's all I have.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, who.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Who specifically would I talk to about those future needs as far as like courtroom and all that? Because I would gladly infuse that into this, there's ample amount of acreage for, you know, that's why we've, we've, you know, obviously stayed away from the existing administrative building. And even though it's just, like you said, an early conceptual drawing, showing a road between here and the jail attaching to additional parking, which obviously could be a parking garage, and a lot of square footage, you know, I would like, if I could know specifically those requirements, I would have no problem turning that around to you guys and showing you exactly where the, you know, what acreage would be dedicated to that long-term. I would gladly do that.
I'm going to share my comments along with, I'm going to probably restate some of the items he did. I don't know if anybody up here hadn't had a one-on-one mini-conversation with you and others about this. The last conversation we had, the dilemma that we're in is, we know the purchase of the, of the property. Now, as you discussed, and I just, I find it hard to believe that people's going to speak today, it is either up or out on it being here. We have offered two locations that we could make this work, and one is just down the street, you go down the street and look forward and there's 20 acres there. And that's what Mr. Bowman was making reference to with the Y. I think we could make that available. We've got other places that we discussed, and it, you have to understand, I don't know of anybody up here that's not adamantly supportive of the project. I think that we would go to bat for it being any place other than what it is. Now, I find it difficult that everybody's going to speak, is going to say, "Either put it here or it's out." And that's, I hate that people would think that, but this board is on board.
Yeah, no, we don't, we don't think that, but, you know, I don't want to be redundant, and I don't, and I definitely don't want to, you know, be disrespectful in any way. You know, what this, what this land lends to creating a true quality of life center is amazing. If a parent takes a child to swim practice, and they drop them off, and they have to get back in their car to go somewhere else to, you know, spend the hour and fifteen minutes or hour and a half while they're, you know, we've fixed something, yes, we've got an aquatic center. But have we, have we fixed the issue at hand, which is a lack of, you know, passive parks and this energy? To have a situation where a parent can actually park their car, kid can go to swim practice, parent can get a stroller out, go around the lake on a trail with the other kids, walk the dog, whatever, go sit by the lake and read a book. That, you know, that is where the demand is. The demand is for this, you know, this whole vision. I'm not against the other acreage, I've made that clear to all you guys. I'm just, you know, very passionate, as well as our board is, and the community that this beautiful facility that we've, you know, been inspired to do would make the largest impact on that water. And that's where we're at. So like I said, I don't mean any disrespect or disregard to the other locations that have been suggested. have been suggested. I just, you know, we as a group feel that this is the best location in the county, geographically and aesthetically. We'll be glad to explore other locations as you, as you've noted. But this, this vision is very strong and I, I look forward to working with Reed and whoever else I need to work with to show the allocated space required for this future expansion for the doubling of the population.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I've got one, Tim. I met with y'all a couple of weeks ago and, and we talked about the amphitheater and I see you have addressed the parking issues that you and I had discussed. Originally, it didn't have a two hundred something parking spaces, but I see you got adequate parking there. It's a nice looking project and like it. Chairman Smith and Commissioner Bowman stated that everybody up here is on board. And far as the location, you know, you and I talked about another location and I even had a set of drawings and you wasn't even going to look at it. And so, I do think you ought to look at all your options. You ought to look at every piece of property that we got. We got this piece right down the street that was dedicated for the YMCA, for an aquatic center, a swim center.
Yes, sir.
We got the area on Jonesboro Road and we got some other sites. And until this commission has come together on a master plan of what we are going to do with this acreage, I don't really see anything changing far as golf course.
Anybody else have any comments?
So, is there any initiative now that's been pushed forward for a master plan? Are there any versions of a master plan?
I think that would, the board would have to meet and discuss that at-
At, at another date.
I got, I'm just, I'm just asking if there is a blueprint or a vision or anything of that nature.
Right now, we're trying to, what I'm going to suggest we put on the SPOLOST, and it's probably not going to be favorable, is we owe twelve point two million on the remainder. We've already paid ten million. We paid twenty-two point five. And I'm going to ask that ten million dollars be considered, be put on the SPOLOST to retire the biggest debt we have, which I understand is, we got twenty-six, we got debt service of twenty-six million. We owe about fifty-eight million. But the ten million out of the twelve point two million is somewhere, I understand, somewhere around four percent. So, I'm-
Four and a half.
Four and a half percent. So, I, I'm going to ask that the board seriously consider putting the adequate amount, which should be somewhere around ten million, to retire the ten million dollar debt. We got one debt for ten million, we got one for two. So, it's twelve point two, but I'm going to ask that they consider putting that on a SPOLOST four, which is acceptable, acceptable under SPOLOST rules to retire debt. So, that, once we can get past that, we, we might could come up with funds to do a master plan. Right now, we don't have the funds to do a master plan.
All right. And I do, to address Mr. Bowman's comment about, we can truly work forward without any money. The purpose of the proposal that we put together in meeting with different community leaders was to be a part of the solution, like what you're, you know, the situation that you're talking about. The whole reason we put our, our program together with SPOLOST was to help service that debt, to help be, you know, because we know it is a sore thumb, a wound, whatever you want to call it. And so, we want to be a part of the solution, clearly. And we would be big advocates of, you know, what you're proposing and, you know, being able to move forward with something of this caliber.
Anybody else have any more comments? Okay. Thank you so much. Was you going to speak?
Just a couple of words if I have a minute left.
Okay, you got-
I don't even have a minute. I don't even need a minute.
No, you don't, because once the dialogue starts in the, as I-
There's no, okay.
Day that I cut the clock off.
Okay. There's no dialogue. I just wanted to make you aware that another Council of Quality Growth member is very much interested in helping and working with the county to do a feasibility study and economic impact study for this land back here. And that's Clayton State University. They're very much interested in doing that. And if you're interested in following up on that, we can get with Michael or whom we ever need to get to and take a look at it and, and verse y'all in what we need to do from this day forward. That's something that would help them and something that definitely would help us on that property. Wouldn't have to spend a dime.
Thank you, Steve. I just want to-
Yes, sir.
I just want to be sure that, that what we do is, I'm in favor of this. I mean, I really, I think it would be tremendous for Henry County and for the citizens to have it. However, I've, once it hit the committee as far as the SPOLOST for other things, I had a number of calls that were not interested, you know, that, and that kind of threw us in a little different situation. The other thing is the Clayton State thing, is that something that, is there a cost involved in that?
No, sir. No, sir, no cost.
Then we need to, we would need to have some conversation about moving forward. We just, we want to, we're going to need a master plan anyway. I mean, regardless of what goes there, we, we don't need to go out there and stick a shovel in the ground because whatever we build there will end up being in the way of something else. I've seen it happen too many times in the past.
Yes, sir. And, and Georgia Tech would be also available to work with Clayton State University on such a plan.
I appreciate it. I'll get with you and Will to have some conversation, you and John, about that.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Next, we're going to open for our public comments. The rule is we will give you five minutes with no dialogue. And I'd like to recognize Mr. Lou Martin. And will all the people who's going to speak, please come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
My name is Lou Martin. I live at 132 Crossing Drive, Stockbridge, Georgia. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for letting us get up here and have our say. I'm not going to be redundant and beat this horse to death about this aquatic center, but I am here to encourage you to take a look at what this could mean for this county. I'm a grandfather. I've got nine grandchildren in this county and I need for you to look to the future for these grandkids. In the United States today, there are two epidemics going on that could, this center with the park could remedy. One is obesity and that affects not only the children, but the adults of this state. We're part of the highest ranked in the country. The other is African-American children are scared of swimming. It's an epidemic that African-American children drowning in this country because they don't have places to go to swim and get swimming lessons. We also feel like this would be a definitely attraction, which has already been brought up. I understand the SPOLOST and the infrastructure. I've been a banker for twenty years. I'm not in the banking business anymore, thank goodness, but I understand infrastructure for roads and repairs and parks needed to draw good quality citizens, but to sustain them, you need a place for people that they can go to as a family, as a whole, and as a county. So, I encourage you, or better yet, I'd like to challenge you to work with us on this project and see forward that we can get this done in the cotton fields if there's any way possible. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm Kathy Kirby.
I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Good morning. I'm Kathy Kirby. I'm Kinsley's grandmother. And first and foremost, we would like to thank you for your undivided attention and most of all, just thank you for your concern and thank you for your support. We so much appreciate it. I too have five grandchildren that are swimmers. Kinsley was an awesome swimmer, swimmer. And this would be wonderful for all the children and all the old people in Henry County. It would just mean so much if we could find a way, find a place for this. Again, we just thank you from the bottom of our hearts and again, thanks.
Thank you so much. I'm going to let ladies go first. I think Clay was supposed to be next, but Ms. Jennifer Hill.
I'm sorry. I didn't know if you were calling them by names. All right, so my name's Jennifer Hill and I reside at 177 Stokes Drive, Stockbridge, Georgia. And I understand all, more, better than I should, how difficult it is to try to want to do something and just trying to figure out the legal ramifications of making it work. And as you know, I run the swim center and so, we have a lot of swimmers in Henry County that need an indoor home to be able to swim in. For me personally, we just need a pool, whether it's this location or any location, is great by me, but we just need a pool that these swimmers can get into to be able to swim at and it would be a great thing for our county. And I'm glad that y'all do seem enthusiastic about trying to make it work. And I understand that there's just so much red tape to go through on how to make that come to fruition, but I feel confident it will happen in our future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
About this issue? I think-
I first want to compliment Mr. Turpin and some of the others for even coming together with an idea. I mean, I look at this as one of those things, we talk about economic development and other things a lot. And I know one of the things that drove the airport was that we basically put up five cents to get ninety-five cents. So, to even have a, an organization, a charity kind of come together and offer to bring something to us, I just don't, I, I think we're all excited as commissioners. I think we're getting hung up in the fact and, you know, and this is, you're excited about it, Mr. Turpin. I can just tell your enthusiasm and passion for it and you've obviously put enough resources that you have engineering firms and others that are willing to do stuff. I don't think us as a group, this is just a concept. We're really, with SPOLOST determinations and other things, we're just trying to figure out, what do we put on the list to create the vision that Mr. Cash was talking about? And this is, I don't want us to vote against something or, or to look at something just because a passion led somebody to kind of grab some land that maybe is not the best land or the most appropriate. Really, all we have to do as a board is agree that we like this concept and how we kind of can make it happen. And I haven't heard anybody here say no to the, to some form of land. So, I think there's still a lot of traction and I don't want anybody to leave this meeting or watch it on TV and say, man, I can't believe the county commissioners aren't for this incredible project. Because I think that we are, it's just that we have to kind of do a little more due diligence on the, on where the location's going to be. And what I like and what I heard from Mr. Cash was we have some resources with Clayton State as well as the engineers that Mr. Turpin's already worked with that might be willing to help us make that vision a reality with master plans and other things. So, I just wanted to make sure I kind of clarified things for, I'm speaking for myself, but I think it does represent a lot of what the board feels. Because I don't want people watching and our emails to get loaded up with people saying, I can't believe y'all are against this. Because that's not what, I, I don't want the public to feel that way. And that's all I have to share.
Okay. Next, we recognize Mr. Wall.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name's Clay Wall, 1365 McDonough Parkway, Chair of the Board of Henry Council of Quality Growth, business owner and a parent here in Henry County. And just to hit on what you just said, Brian, I don't think there's anybody in this room that is against this. And I think we all just need to look where we can come together and work this out. This is, be a huge economic boon for the county. Many of you were at the South Metro Development Council and Porsche was talking about what they look for when they moved and they never mentioned Henry County. They mentioned Peachtree City, College Park area for the quality of life, the schools. And this is just another tool in our tool belt for economic development. As a builder, people will move here for these types of things. Commissioner Holmes, I was out of town when you had your groundbreaking. I grew up in the East Clayton, North Henry area. We didn't have a park. Thirty years ago, we went to DeKalb County to swim at the YMCA or the Grant Park pools or play at the baseball fields. And we don't need to wait thirty years for something like this. Henry County needs it now. And just thank all of y'all and thank the Turpin family for this vision. Thank you.
Other questions for John?
Do you have private investors? Whether, I mean, this is, this is a great project, but the only concern that I have is that, you know, these are SPOLOST money that you're, you're requesting. And I think you told me that this is going to be privately owned. I'm not sure if we can use SPOLOST funds to-
It's a 501(c)(3).
It is a nonprofit foundation with a governing board. Everything is transparent.
Can you, can you help us out on that? Can we use SPOLOST funds to fund the privately owned?
Well, we're, we're not, we're not going to own the land.
But the building.
Yeah, essentially, what we have asked for is a parking lot and, and to help with what Chairman Smith has made, you know, where in dealing with the debt associated with the, with the land, the park land. So-
We will have to look at the details of the proposed arrangement. I'm just hearing about this generally just now. And so, I think that, you know, looking at the proposed development and, and working with our bond council, we will have to examine exactly what is being requested and whether or not those SPOLOST funds can be applied to that particular request.
Yeah, there would be-
But generally-
I'm sorry.
Generally, no, but it depends on the nature of the request and the arrangement.
You said the county would own the land.
Correct.
So, then what would, would we give you the SPOLOST funds for?
I don't, I don't want any SPOLOST funds. I'm, we're trying, like I said before, we're trying to be a solution. I want to help you guys put together a creative thing that's very attractive to the taxpayer, to the voter, right? So, the concept of if I go out November 5th and I vote for SPOLOST and I know that there's going to be this land allocated, then it sounds more attractive that three point five million is going to service some debt from the past. Whereas if somebody's just going out to vote for three point five million dollars worth of debt service, then it probably doesn't sound as attractive to a vote.
So, you're not requesting SPOLOST funds?
No, I'm, I'm requesting to help service the debt and I'm requesting for the county to provide us with the parking lot. And that parking lot would also obviously service some of the park space that's around the lake. And then, we would have a lease. And that lease would, you know, be very detailed. Obviously, the only thing we can do with that land is operate an aquatic facility. And the, and the county retains the land. And that's something that can happen with 501(c)(3)'s. It's no different than like the Humane Society being located on municipal land.
It's a big similar to the agreement- That we were going to have with the YMCA. And, and that, the YMCA bailed on us. We didn't bail on them. But just to be very, very blunt, but it'd be the same agreement. I mean, it's, we own the property, he owns the, the infrastructure and, you know, ninety-nine year lease or whatever. I mean, it, that's-
It doesn't matter.
That's not a hard thing for us to put together.
No.
That's a simple, that's probably be the simplest part of all, so.
Yeah, and like, like I said, like what this allows us to do as a foundation in getting big naming opportunities, big sponsorship dollars, big foundation dollars, for you guys to, to stand up and say, here's the foundation. We're, you know, we're providing this beautiful canvas to paint the picture is ridiculously empowering. You know, it's a bigger challenge for us as a foundation to go out and raise funds at different locations. When you talk about the design that we've done and, and you talk about this marquee location on the lake, this is very attractive to folks that make a lot of money in our neighborhood. Home Depot, Chick-fil-A, Delta Airlines, Coca-Cola. We've got big doors opened to us and the front doors, not the back doors. People are waiting anxiously and the number one question is where is it going to be? And all of y'all have seen my dedication to, you know, trying to secure that.
Well, that's what, kind of what I'm-
What I'm hearing is, no different than when the Technical School, Southern Crescent, you know, part of what made that so successful at the state level. I had several lawmakers and legislators who have nothing to do with Henry County said, holy cow, Henry County put together a package unlike anything I've ever seen. You had collaboration between the cities, you had collaboration between the county, and then you had the business owners, I mean, the business leaders of the community all come together with Southern Crescent Technical School. And it was just a force that the state stood up and said, wow, these guys have their act together. I feel like you're trying to put together the exact same narrative where when you go raise funds from these organizations for your charity, you can say, look, we've got buy-in from the community. We've got buy-in from the county, from the city. Because I think the city of McDonough has also shown some interest in, in helping out on this as well as the business leaders. Now, you're trying to create the exact same narrative to get that ground swell of support so that everybody in the state kind of stands up and goes, wow, those guys really have done their homework and made this thing happen. And, and I think that, that makes sense. No, it's, it's-
The deal with this private sector and public land is a little more unique than the Southern Crescent Tech. Okay, it appears that there's going to be significant amounts of money allocated in SPOLOST. Now, having said that, I have been told that there will have to be some local legislation in place to make this happen. I mean, it's kind of unique and it, it's, we have to have legislation in place to work out all the details because there are so many entities involved in the Southern Crescent Technical College, but we willing to do that. Now, what you're saying- College, but we willing to do that. Now, what you're saying, uh, the, I think the board, this board would be on board for the twenty acres down the street, because they've, they've indicated that, and it's been sitting there, and it was for Aquatic Center, and we had worked the details out once, with the Y, which is a nonprofit organization. So, uh, i- if you're looking for the board to say, come to you and said, hey, we, we favor this, which we do, now, let's, here's what we willing to do. We willing to make the arrangements to, to make it work with the twenty acres down the street or other places. So I think the board might be willing to consider that. But there has to be discussions about that. So that's, that's all I have to say.
I understand.
Anybody else have any comment?
And we're ready to discuss and answer questions, and, you know, we have resources for, you know, helping with all this site plan and concept.
Mr. Chairman, the language referring to McDonough Street, do we have, currently have debt service on that, on that property?
That's what, no.
Do we, do we owe any money on that property, or is...
Uh, no. That's probably one of the few that we don't. I, I'm saying...
So in this case, we, we would be looking to donate the land to the Aquatic Center?
Well, it would be a, a contribution type, what I'm saying, we can work that out without having local legislation. So I'm saying, don't, don't confuse the tech center.
So then, so then there will be no need for SPOSS funds, since they're not going to be using those funds, those funds for the structure, correct?
Just lease the property.
I, I, I mean, it would be, that can be worked out, and it won't be any financial obligation on our part, if I'm correct. I mean, we could enter into an agreement that we provide the twenty acres, and somebody provides something, and we enter into an agreement, and it will not take local legislation to do that. And that could be worked out. So you correct me if I'm wrong, legal?
There will have to be a substantial public benefit in return for the leasing of the land, and those details can be worked out in an agreement, um, between the partners, between the county and, um, Mr. Turpin's organization. But there will have to be something in exchange, that's a substantial public benefit in exchange for the, the land.
For public record, don't, let me be the source of its paid off. I mean, out of fifty-eight million dollars that, that we owe, I'm, I'm thinking that's not, that's not included in it.
There is...
Fred has to be in this conversation, because when I was Executive Assistant to the Board, Fred worked for Bennett, and Fred was directly affiliated with the Y at that time. And this is how I first, uh, knew Fred, is me being the, the, the carry guy, uh, to go to, take, uh, I took all the plans for the land to Fred's office, based on instructions from Chairman. That is a, a, we discussed that. And we got other places that your committee or your group could sit down with staff and, um, pick a place that, that we own outright, fee simple, and make it work. And I'm ninety-nine percent certain that that is, we owe no monies on it. So let's, uh, for the sake, we're not going to resolve this issue today, for the sake of time. Uh, we're going to keep the dialogue going. I think you got a consensus of, of six people up here that's, uh, for this project. We're going to work diligently to make it work, uh, in another place. So having said that, the, if the board...
I would like to add one, one more thing. We would, like Reed said before, and, and I'm, we're, we're going to look at all locations, making that clear. But like Reed said before, we would gladly put the Aquatic Center on the lake with no SPOSS dollars. Just, just to make that clear. And, and we, and we would gladly, you know, see, you know, we'd rather see SPOSS dollars go toward amphitheater and some concepts like that. So we're, we're ready. We just need the foundation. We're ready to build the walls, we're ready to dig the hole, we're ready to make a big, uh, big splash in the community.
Another thing I must go throw in, uh, we are going to have an improvement, significant improvements, uh, to the jail complex. Okay, if you look at your schematic, where's the jail going? We're going to expand the jail. I mean, it's obvious. We either do it on our own through SPOSS money, or the federal government's probably going to...
We should, we drew some expansion in, on the, on the jail. We drew like five additional pods. They're in red, I believe?
Yes. I thought I just threw that in.
Okay, cool. And, and...
Yeah.
And we'd be glad, like I said, I'll work with Reed, and I'll find out exactly what the requirements are for four hundred thousand, uh, population here in the county. And, uh, you know, we'll move forward with all options.
Anybody else have any comments?
I have a question.
Thank you. Yeah, we have one question.
Yeah. I know John, about, oh, maybe a year ago, was it the Women's Republican Meeting? And you present, give your presentation, and you were talking about, you probably needed about twelve acres at that time. And, uh, now I notice it's twenty-five acres that you need.
Yeah, we just, we, you know, our vision is to have a green space buffer that we would maintain, that we would keep beautiful. When you host a swim meet, um, there's a huge number of people that show up, obviously, that aren't swimmers. You got family and fans and stuff like that. And so you physically need places for people to fall. To host a really high caliber swim meet, literally, you, you'll have, you end up with a tent city wrapped around your facility. So everybody's out with their soccer tents and their soccer chairs, and they've got snacks and coolers and such. So you need, in, in further research after that production, after the presentation you were at, we found out the, the, you know, there's a direct need for green space, so that when you have a big swim meet, the, the teams have places to fall. You have to have places for people to, to, to land. So that's, that's the purpose there. And, you know, all that, you know, you know, once, none of this, all that property would be maintained by our foundation. There would be no expenditures from the general fund of Henry County.
So would twenty acres come close to working?
Twenty acres would probably come close to working, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anybody else have any comments, questions? Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Uh, do we have anybody else that signed up that the paperwork did not reach the, the bench? Okay, I'm going to say that concludes the, uh, allocated time to hear from the citizens. Uh, right now, I need a motion to adjourn into executive session, uh, to discuss acquisition of real estate, uh, potential, uh, litigation, and personnel matters, if somebody would see fit to move. We have a motion from District One, second from District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, just say, lift your right hand. Okay. Uh, we're going to adjourn the regular meeting. We will go into executive session, uh, and we will come back out. When we come back out, we're going to go into discussions regarding the SPOSS for projects. So having said that, we adjourn.
Just the infrastructure alone is about 4.8 million dollars. So with a $6 million price tag, we would have the infrastructure, but not the critical user equipment that we need to operate the system. I've invested 1.8 of 911 fees, as well as I have an additional million dollars that we have in reserve to dedicate to the project. So I'm not really sure why we had a significant cut. You know, we had some discussions. I'm not sure that we would be able to secure the grant funding to move the project forward, but it is definitely a project we must move forward with at some point that's critical to our public safety. I'll take any questions y'all have for me as well.
Let me ask you this. You're saying if we just merely give you 6 million, you can have all the hardware, but you can't cut it off? Is that basically what you're saying?
I'm saying that if we have $6 million, we would pay roughly 4.8 to get the infrastructure in place, and we would not have the user equipment to go forward with it.
What does it change on this budget, taking out City of Stockbridge? If we no longer have to provide coverage in the city area?
Well, I'm glad you asked that, and I've talked to the manager, and I'm sure we'll have some discussions with the city. The city would probably have two options. They would continue to be on the radio system, and we continue to serve as the primary public safety answering point for the City of Stockbridge, unless they choose to do their own 911 services for the city, as well as implement their own communication system.
But even if they say that, they have to help us offset? There would be some type of agreement?
I think, just without knowing what type of department they're going to have, I would probably relate their costs to just user and equipment, close to the costs that are in the City of McDonough. The City of McDonough, if you look, if we moved to this new radio system, just in the City of McDonough, that was the back sheet I gave you, their user and equipment is roughly $623,997. That's just their user equipment. We would pick up the cost of the infrastructure of the system.
Can you say, because that-
I'll, just straight up, and you've always done a great job, Don, just like we talked about last night with the sirens, as well as the backend with using smartphone technology to notify our citizens of disasters and, you know, with the weather. It does give me a little heartburn when I see 12 million dollars, though. Is that, what did our existing system cost? I mean, is it-
When we purchased our system eight years ago, we, I believe, it came in at like 8.7 million dollars.
Is that with the infrastructure, I mean, putting in-
That was with infrastructure, user equipment. Let me just give you a history. When we purchased the initial radio system for the county, we purchased everything, the county, the cities, and we still continue to pay all the service charges and the warranty work on all the user equipment as the county.
I want to give you the tools to be as effective as possible, but I'm also trying to make sure that we're not, that we're being good stewards with the resources as well. I don't know. I don't really know what the question to ask is, but it's just that 6 million seemed like a good bit. 12 million gives me a little bit of indigestion, and I'm just trying to figure out how we, how we bridge the gap there, to get you what you need, but keep the costs reasonable.
Don, you know, with the cities participating, that puts us up about 7 million, a little above 7 million. We're still 5 million short.
And I think we will also, if we choose, a couple things we can do as a government, if we choose to upgrade our existing radio system, in discussions with Harris, we should have some discounts coming back to the county, up to 20% of the total project cost. But well within the project, we possibly can bring in our own management team to manage the project implementation as well, which saves some additional funds. We're also, we'll go back and trim the numbers, make sure we've got the right numbers for equipment. The variable that I don't know is that if the City of Stockbridge do choose to remain on the public safety system, that would be some cost to get those units outfitted with equipment as well.
Don, there's some-
Some police officers I've talked with, and they're getting on the north end of the county, have dead spots, and radios are not even functioning properly on that north end. Does this fix that issue?
This should correct that problem, because we're going to a total IP-based radio system, and some of the coverage issues we have on our north end, you know, we're 10 years into the system, we couldn't even calculate that we would have them. So we're, that's one of the main things we're looking to do, is correct coverage issues in the radio system as well.
So what would be a good realistic number? You're saying 12 million is a good realistic number?
Sir, I think the best way to get a realistic number is just to look at a couple variables. I've asked all our public safety departments to look at the numbers we proposed to them. I can give you a finagle, in discussion with Chief Nichols, we're going to be able to cut the total number of radios. He asked on his list right now, we should be able to cut it about 40 radios, which is a savings of, you know, about $100,000. So that's what we're doing now. We're meeting with departments, trimming back as many numbers as we can cut back to get just what we need to operate on.
So based on the data that you just gave us, 12 million would be a very realistic anticipated number? Huh?
I think, aren't you saying you can trim that down some?
I think that, in discussion with Harris, I think that we can come in roughly a good number, if we can come in at 9, 8, 8.5 to 9, and remember, I have a million that I can dedicate toward the project on top.
So we're going to scratch the 12. We're going to scratch the 6, and we-
Well, but let's talk this out loud, is, if, the thing I have a question on is that we had 8 million in this current system, and how long did it last? Eight years?
We're in, I believe, year 12 now.
Okay. And there's no value of any of the equipment or anything that can be used? There's not a million dollars of value, million and a half of any of our current technology handsets as we trade that in, or?
Commissioner, President, I'll give you an example. Last year, you know, we had to upgrade our switch, because our switch had reached its life expectancy. So that was the initial 1.8 million investment we moved. The technology is just changing so quickly, and we're at the point now, if we continue where we're at, we'll probably be maintaining a radio system that's not supported anymore, and eventually, they won't even be making parts for.
So zero value in the existing technology that we have?
What I'm hearing is that it's the end of life expectancy. Yes, sir.
So we're still talking back at the 12 million in, is that?
Well, no, I don't think we're hearing that either.
No, I think, if I had to give you a definitive number, I would try to stay right at, you know, with the million dollars we will invest, hopefully, we can get the project done for 8.5. Then the question I have is, as the commission-
He said 8.5, the only thing, we've got some city involved.
That we might be able to get two.
We're talking about 5 million dollars from the city.
So maybe we put seven.
Okay. We're going, we have to start out with some-
Well, it sounds like 8.5, though.
And he's counting, putting his million in to bring it to 9.5. Did I, is that the way I understand it?
That's what, I'm thinking 9.5, if we have a million that we are going to invest in the system, of funds we have in reserve, we're still going to be about 8.5 short to do everything we need to do.
We're predicated on the cities, assuming that they would make their contribution, then we talking about 7 million. Is that, did I read that in there?
If the cities make a contribution.
Okay. So we're going, I'm going to change that from, in the amount revised by the SPOLOs to the BOC, to 7 million. Thank you so much. Amelies, I think that's self-explanatory. The technical college, I'm going to tell you, that would be, as listed here, a countywide, and as I stated earlier, there has to be some local legislation to make that happen, but it can happen. Henry County DOT construction, 2.2, I think that ought to be, obviously, a countywide, because they will move around throughout the county. The jail has to be-
Is that number updated, though, or did we just buy a piece of equipment?
Right. Right now?
We just bought a new tack truck.
Terry, do we need to update that number?
Well, you can. We did buy a truck, that truck, 150. I would-
One of the things that we've gotten hammered with this year is this grass with the weather and the rain, and I'm sure each of y'all have received numerous complaints about the grass. Before we cut all 150 of that, I would like to maybe look at adding some additional tractors and mowers. I think we can reduce that amount, but I'd like to maybe reinforce that a little bit. So if you give me the option to go back and kind of take a hard, hard look at my mowing equipment, see if I need to do anything there, I could certainly report back.
The jail, that's a countywide, if you're going to spend, I don't know how this come about. Somebody, the project submitted for the Henry County Airport FOB was 2 million, and they got that reduced to 1, so what was the factor to get that reduced?
You said in District 1?
I'm sorry, I said that, I said the Henry County Airport FOB, they estimated the, it's going to cost 2 million, and then the committee reduced it to 1 million.
Sorry, misunderstood.
I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out-
What are we going to get for a million dollars? I think it's the answer to the question.
That's, what was it going to get for 2 million? And if somebody reduced it to 1?
Yeah, it'd be good to know what we're going to get for anything.
I think, yeah. We're discussing-
Would you come up here at the podium where we can all hear you, please? And state your name and-
I was served on the SPOLO committee. Where that, that number came about was, we looked at, by the committee, trying to reduce some of these costs down to where they're feasible. We had a discussion with Ron about the FBI, and he said that he could bring the cost in at a million dollars. That's the reason that particular item ended up-
Bill what somebody wants to bill, and it was served to purpose for a million dollars.
That's, that's the information we got from-
That, I find that acceptable, so I'm just going to check that off. Thank you.
All right. And one other thing, when we get to police cars, I'll go ahead and mention that now. The reason you see the reduction there down to 1.4, we reduced the number of cars that we were going to buy. That's from, from 43, I think, down to 30. So that kind of helps you understand where, where some of these came from.
Okay. The animal control, I think everybody understands that would be a countywide. Police patrol, you said we reduced 43 cars down to how many? 20? 30? And that's over a period of six years, so if, does the board have any issues on reducing that to 1.4 million? Is that, okay, I'm going to change that. We're going to show 1.4 million. Fire stations countywide, that 4.5, is that all the fire stations listed?
That's just two.
Sir?
That's just two.
Okay. We're going, we're going to change this substantially. So we looking at District 2 has two, a need for two.
Well, then-
Huh? That we already have one in, and then, you know, those emails that you've been receiving, because I've seen you've been copied on them as well, is somewhere around Walker Road that would service Harren Bay and some of the others.
Yeah, but you need two total.
Exactly.
Okay, we need two total. District 1 needs one.
Yes, sir.
You need two. Now, is this new ones or replacements?
One replacement, one new.
Okay, it's a significant difference.
It's not an instructional cost difference.
Okay, so you need, you need two. Gary, how about you need District 1?
I'd like to ask Chief.
I think we ought to ask the chief to come address some of this, because I could ask for four, if we're just going off of numbers.
I might go ahead and put out six.
Okay.
I'd be happy to address that, and thank you for the opportunity. I'm sorry that I had left the room for the prior discussion. As we had mentioned, the SPOLOs that's presented to you at this point in time identifies two replacement stations, as it was presented to you, and that's Station 8 on Flippin Road, and also Station 2, which is in Locust Grove. Now, those are existing fire stations where we have existing personnel and existing equipment today. As many of you have alluded to, you've received a lot of emails from your constituents about ISO ratings and areas of the county that are not covered within five road miles of a fire station. And specifically, the greatest need for a fire station in those areas exists, first in that southern portion in the Luella area, where we have property in the Luella area already to build a fire station. And then, also, we have the same type of problem that exists pretty much in the middle of the county, it's in the Mount Carmel area. There's actually places off of Mount Carmel Road where we don't have a fire station within five road miles. And so those are the two areas that we had identified from the fire department as being the next two priorities for fire stations. Now, I know that you've received a number of calls from people, Mr. Bowman, in the, in the northern area of your district, specifically up off of Airline Road in that area, that are also more than five road miles from the, from a fire station. And so they currently are complaining, you know, about their insurance rating, so, but, but those are the two areas that we've exist, that we have identified, and then the third area would obviously be in the, up in the Kellytown area, as far as fire stations.
Also, we've already purchased, set aside for a fire station on Kellytown Road, so that-
Right. But in order, that was in order of priority, as far as we see it from the fire service standpoint, in terms of where we're running calls and the amount of calls we're running, and the lack of coverage that we have for the county.
And that was good for me to hear also, Chief.
And the fact that, because I, and I want to ask you, get your opinion, would you prefer to, to build the new structures where we don't have coverage, or would you prefer, I mean, which one would you prefer to put priority on? The new ones in those three areas, or the rehabbing? Because I have one that needs to be rehabbed, but I'd be willing to look at making sure we get coverage before, from a public safety standpoint.
And I think that that's, that's probably the most prudent thing to do, but you need to consider the impact that that's going to have on you, as well as in terms of impact of budget, because in the new stations, you're going to need to hire personnel for those, and that's an ongoing personnel cost that's going to, that's going to come into play in order to staff those stations.
Chief, what are your thoughts on the Fairview Station? It has to be in the worst, one of the, you know, one station that's in one of the worst conditions of any station in the county. Can you give me your thoughts on that?
It's not the worst. We, we have a couple that are definitely in front of it, but it is an older station. It is a station that could use some, some work.
I think, I think we need to add that to the list as well, countywide, this public safety.
So how many countywide fire stations do we need at this moment that is pressing?
At this moment, it's pressing that we, the two stations that are most in need of repair are Station 8 and Station 2, and then, but- need of repair are Station Eight and Station Two, and then, but the new stations that we need most urgently are, are the, uh, Luella area and the Mount Carmel area.
Okay, we, we.
After Eight and Two.
Followed closely by, followed closely by the Kelly.
We're talking new stations.
Yes.
We're talking closely by Four and, and how about Five? District Five.
Fairview Station. That should definitely be on the list.
As far as a new station or a replacement station?
A new, new or replacement, whichever one will get the most people below a ten.
What are your thoughts?
Well, there are two different things. Replacing a station won't help us with I S O rating in terms of folks that are below a ten, because you're basically covering the same footprint of the county that you're already cover.
We're talking, we're talking strictly conditioned.
Right. Strictly conditioned, um, Station Eight needs to be replaced.
All right, let's get it on. I'd like to get every how many fire stations, uh, to get the most people below the ten as, as possible.
I heard, I heard the two, walk, I mean, the Walker, Mount Carmel, and then the one in District, you know, the.
As far as new, and then as far as replacement stations, um, Station Two in Locust Grove, Station Eight on Flipping Road, and Station Six would be third in that priority in terms of replacement stations.
Now, that's a, that's a replacement?
Yes.
Okay, so we looking at Three and Four? So we looking at four fire stations? Is that what we're looking at? Plus, uh.
Three, three new.
One replacement?
Three replacement.
One replacement?
Three new, three replacement.
Three, three and three, is that what you said?
Three new, three replacement. Six total.
Does that include the Fairview Station, correct?
Yes, sir.
And how much, uh, would each fire station? How much?
Twelve million dollars.
Okay. So let's go to the, uh, fire station, uh, countywide, we're going to take that four point five, and we're going to put that at twelve.
My recommendation would be if, if you're with the new stations, would be to also purchase the equipment that goes in those stations.
Okay. How much would that be?
And at, at a minimum for each station, I would recommend a, an ambulance and a pumper, um, and that's going to be in the neighborhood of seven hundred thousand dollars for that, so.
A piece or all of them?
Going to be.
Each? Each station?
For each station. Seven hundred thousand for each station, so you've got.
Four point three. Four point three million. So we talking about sixteen point three.
You only need for three, oh, well, four.
Sir?
You're looking at three new stations or all six, even the replacements getting new equipment?
Well, at this point, we haven't bought any capital equipment for fire stations in the last two years. You did remount two ambulances last night, but, um, I would, I would recommend, um, we either need to, we either need to figure out how to continue to fund, uh, replacement of fire apparatus out of, uh, the annual budget cycle or, or, you know, through this manner. So, um, at this point, my recommendation would be buy new equipment with each one of those, uh, stations.
Do you replace the station?
Yes.
That would be, that would be.
Sixteen point three for fire stations. Does anybody agree with that?
Um, one other thing too, and. Just, uh, Chief, uh, that's just the construction of them. We'd need, what would we need to equip the three new stations as far as equipment? What kind of dollars are we looking at there?
Well, equipping in terms of fire apparatus is what I just gave you at, at about, if you did an ambulance and a, and a pumper for each station, that's seven hundred thousand dollars per station. Um, as far as personnel costs for the three new stations, um, you know, that, that may be, um, you know, you're going to, you're going to be close to eight hundred and forty thousand dollars per station for the new stations.
Yeah. Okay, what, what we need to establish here is we looking at the six-year program, and we need to be smart about this, and, and simply because we got it here, uh, we, we have to program as to how to program the construction and hope the economy comes up at, at where we can staff it, because there'd be nothing like building a, a nice new facility and putting all the trucks in it, and we can't staff it. So we, it, it, just putting the public on notice, simply because we putting it here and the SPOLOX passes, that means that we can physically build it, but we, we wouldn't build it if we didn't know we could staff it. So that's something that we, we're going to have to coordinate it.
And that's why historically, and when we spoke to the SPOLOX committee in, in, uh, in the meetings, uh, that precluded this, um, we talked about the importance of maybe doing the replacement stations early in the project, because you already have personnel in place for, um, for those stations, uh, and, and saving your newer stations till later in the project.
I think that would be a good.
With that though, you're not helping your I S O rating at all by just doing a replacement station.
Absolutely not.
I mean, we've been in those for a long time, and, you know, we, we need to think new stations, even though it's going to cost us, you know.
Absolutely not.
Got to come up with it.
Yeah.
Is that a ground floor public safety?
Safety type issue.
I, I think next year, uh, in, in the budget, we can, we can get a feel for where we're going, but I'm just putting you on notice, I'm for putting all this money in there, but in reality, uh, we, we would know better as to where we could put it on the list in a six-year period more so than we do now. Right now, the, the assessment's only went up point eight four, so you can't, if it goes up an average of point eight four in six years, we know better off then than we are now, so, um, I, I know the economy's going to get much better. Yes, sir. Chief, uh, down on the south end, down Old Jackson, down that way?
Yes, sir.
Don't you, don't you think we need at least one ambulance down that way?
We do need an ambulance on the east side of, of the county. The only ambulance that we currently run on the east side of the county is running out of the Lake Dow station, and so when that ambulance is out on a call, that, that side of the county's pretty, uh, a pretty long response time for us, uh, and either, either in the Old Jackson area or, or out, um, off of Keys Ferry, one of those two places.
We don't have one at either, either Keys Ferry or Old Jackson.
Neither one of those, yeah.
What's the personnel run a year?
Personnel for, uh, staffing and ambulance is going to be about four hundred and twenty thousand, uh, dollars a year.
Per station?
Per station. Per ambulance.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Chief, uh, as far as McDonough goes. The county for years has promised the city that they would put an ambulance in the city fire station. Where does that stand?
Um, we've discussed that. I suspect that we'll, we will discuss that more. We have a meeting coming up with the city, um, I think on the sixth, uh, and I suspect that we, that that will be a topic of discussion there. Um, I've spoken with, with the fire chief on a number of, uh, of different occasions, and there, there are pros and cons to doing that. There are currently two ambulances inside the city limits of McDonough that are, that are running off six six four Industrial Boulevard, so it's not like there, there aren't ambulances inside of the city. There, there are, there's just not one in the downtown area.
Well, I know the city actually built a building just for this ambulance, oh, years ago, and it was fulfilled, and I just want to know about that. But far as District Three, you don't see any need, any additional fire stations?
At, at this point, that, that area is fairly well, uh, covered.
Thank you so much. That, that would do that. Okay, so I, I put down six stations, I put sixteen point three, and that, that would be the point of beginning. The next item is a new interchange on Interstate seventy-five, South of one fifty-five. Uh, I, I got, I think that's a needed interchange, but at, at the point now, as far as being a SPOLOX project.
Well, here's, here's my thought on, on this, is that, um, where do we have a lot of trouble in the community with traffic as well as, it's our distribution corridors with one fifty-five, twenty-eighty-one, and without a doubt, I mean, interchange, I mean, was it seventy, eighty million dollars to do an interchange? I mean, Reed, do, do you know that number?
About fifty million.
About fifty million? So this is, I think what I look at this, putting this on the SPOLOX list, is to show the state as well as the federal government that we're interested in being a partner in the solution for Henry County. If, if, and I, there's, believe me, I've had conversations with people at the state level, especially with us getting those express lanes, um, coming right through here, so they, they want to have dialogue with us. If we can just show them that we want to be a partner in this process, I think there's a good chance we might have potential for getting this funded if we show that we also want to be a stakeholder in this. If it doesn't happen, what are we out? I mean, we're basically listing, if you guys are willing to give us ninety cents on each dollar for this asset to our community that could solve a tremendous problem, we want to be part of the solution. If they can't do it, then obviously this five, five and a half million dollars is, you know, is just not, it, it's just going to be there, but it, or, you know, it's earmarked, but it just doesn't get used. We've had plenty of projects that we've put on the list that unless things line up, they don't happen, but I, I do want us to be a stakeholder in a solution for the county's major, major problems.
It's going to be fine, state federal ninety percent. Let me ask you this, though. Realistically speaking, I know what y'all talking about, but what's the chances of that turning out to be reality?
A lot better with this money in there versus not being in there.
A little skin in the game, you've got a lot better chance here.
I mean, whenever I do any, any deal with any, I mean, my day job working with investments, whenever anybody comes to me with private placements, I say, how much money are you putting in from your family, your money? I think it definitely speaks that we are serious about this, if we list this as a, as a priority one countywide project.
Okay.
And what are you really out if it doesn't happen?
Okay. Now, I, I, I don't know where we're going on this, uh, SPOLOX program. Obviously, that's going to be a countywide, uh, issue to fund management, and that's.
Well, it has to.
I, I know, but I don't know about the four point seven million.
I think they've readjusted it.
They've been here, and they've talked a little bit about the, the management costs, and, and I'll go on record once more, is stating that, uh, you know, this is a very, very small percentage of the total amount to be collected, and we tried private organization before, and they didn't do, they did such a lousy job that it failed the next time it came up. So these, uh, we've got a lot for our money having our own department do capital roads and, I mean, roads and transportation projects and capital projects.
So what should that be?
Well, I, I think we should, uh, uh, Rocky had already made a comment, if you'd come up, Rocky, and talk about what you're talking about, and.
Yes, uh, good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, in the previous meeting, I had mentioned that we could reduce this to three point nine, and, uh, that would be comfortable for us to manage the program for the next six years.
I, I, I concur with Commissioner Bowman about, uh, doing it in-house, because I've, uh, uh, I just concur with what he said, and I also concur for the reasons he said it. Okay, thank you. Hey, while you're up there, uh, the probate court, uh, has a request.
Yes, my uncle Harris is going to talk about that.
Okay.
He's got more information on that.
Okay, it, it, it's not on the list, but it, it did come up after the fact, and I'm going to ask that this be considered a countywide project too, because it's, uh, it's on there. And just for, for records, my daughter's a probate judge, and I don't, I don't have any, uh, financial interest in the, in the probate court, so I'm not going to recuse myself, but this is something that they've worked on for several years, and it's, if it don't get done with SPOLOX funds, obviously it will not get done.
Thank you, Chairman, and good afternoon, Commissioners. What I've handed out is, there's two pieces. The first piece, as noted by the Chairman, speaks about needed improvements to the probate court building. Um, staff was contacted by the probate court judge, um, week or so ago to discuss and review some of the challenges that they're having within their building. What I've gone through is, I've gone through and kind of prioritized the list based on the needs as noted by the probate court judge. Again, those things are listed in priority one, um, certainly more immediate needs, first one being replacement of an existing roof. The building, the building was originally built in nineteen seventy-two. It's the original slate roof that's on there right now. They're having some issues and some structural deficiencies are already showing up in the roof, so I feel that's a definite immediate need. And two of the other items, construct a fire-rated room to retain files. In speaking with the probate court judge, that is a mandate that's issued by the state that they have to be able to retain their files in a fire-rated room. Also, a separate secure room for the G, G C I C and the fingerprinting functions. Again, that's supposed to be held, those functions are supposed to be done in a secured area. Right now, it is not, it's on a, on a little side office area where it can be accessed by the public. Those were the, some of the, the, the first few principal issues, and you see, going down the list, there's another, a, a, a variety of other, of other items, such as reconfiguring the number of the, um, number of the rooms. It is, again, this building was converted from the existing library building, and when that was done, staff came in, using in-house staff, using Mike Keable and his, and his crew, they came in and put him in, put in a number of offices. However, you, you still do not have, there's some security issues that still continue to exist with the staff as well as with the judge, um, with the judge as well. But prior to getting into the restructuring and some of the expansion that's needed, we felt to be appropriate to move forward with having some engineer drawings done to find out exactly what and how to go about doing this. The hope being that when you get into the priority two and the priority three items, a lot of that work can be done using in-house staff. Um, so again, from this standpoint, we're looking for, at least from the initial one, is trying to identify, at the very least, that first priority, that ninety thousand, that estimated ninety thousand for the first priority. When you get down into the, again, priority three, um, one of the items is additional parking. That would likely require acquiring property from adjacent property owner, so again, not knowing, you know, for certain what that number could be, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of variables that are still not, that are still yet undetermined. Um, so that's the issue regarding the probate, the probate building. If you have any questions about it, and also, Mike Keable and Hutch Purvis are also here from Facilities Maintenance, so addressing specific questions that you may have related to the work that's being noted here.
Over a long-term, uh, five-year period, we looking at five hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Yes, and that's, right now, that's a conservative estimate, we hope a conservative estimate. Again, items such as the, um, adding the parking would require, um, acquisition of land, don't know exactly what that land would cost, and once we get the, that's why we put the drawings in the first priority. Once we get the actual drawings done, engineer drawings done, that gives a better idea of being able to go forward and make some more, um, definitive estimates on what the, what the final cost would be.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
You know, technology's making it where paper files are slowly going, becoming things that maybe, you know, it seems unheard of, but ten years from now, we might say it's ridiculous that we built a whole room to be fire, fireproof. Um, what's the, because I have fireproof safes, they're filled with concrete, and they're actually safes. Is that, I mean, does that meet the state requirements? So maybe we're not building a whole room, because it, it just seems like with county buildings, what now is the probate building might eventually be some other building, and that concrete room is going to be a bear to ever try to do something with in the future. Does a fire safe, it's much more cost-effective and probably reflects technology better than building a whole room? I, I don't know the answer, though. It doesn't have to be a category.
That's correct. It's just fire-rated, so a lot of it's just a matter of.
Fire-rated, it, it doesn't have to be category, you, you can use three layers or five eights. Fire shield, sheet rock can make it fire-rated.
But is it still cheaper to do the safes individually, since that's the technology that, you know, because I have fire safes, you know, they're concrete safes that, that you burned them and they, the files would still be fine, and they're not, I mean, they're, they're expensive, but in relation to building something, plus you move them and take them with you.
I think one of the challenges with probate is they, the volume of files they have, because they have to retain all of the birth certificates, death certificates, marriage certificates, I think there's some that they actually have to retain in perpetuity, from what I, from what I understand, speaking with the probate coaches. I think the, just the sheer volume requires that big of a space. But to Commissioner Bowman's point, he's right, it's just a matter of adding additional sheet rock and make sure your penetrations are sealed.
The other thing is, is priority one, it should be a priority. The, the roof, there's an issue with the roof, it, it should be changed. The roof, there's an issue with the roof, it should be changed. If we don't do it, we'll be looking at mold issues and other things down the road that will be extremely expensive. And I've been over there on a number of occasions, not because I was in trouble, but I've been over there and walking through the staff area to get to the courtrooms is a little bit, I can understand how if you had a mental issue, that could be a problem. You know, priority one and priority two are very needed, not sure that priority three should be in play at this time. You know, there's, there's a lot of other issues coming up in the next five or six years.
And in speaking with the judge, she was, she was fine with, you know, breaking down, basing those priorities and obviously wanting to get the process started was one of her big pushes.
Why don't we do this? Based on your comments, if the board would approve is, let's put down probate improvements and reduce it from five hundred and seventy, which would take out priority three and go two hundred and twenty thousand, which would be priority one and two.
Priority one and two, I think are very needed, is just my opinion, sir.
Is that something that...
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that. Michael, just one comment that I'd like to make. When we do get to the priority three thing, when we start having restrooms...
Yes, sir.
There's no sewer available right there in front of Sim Street. Their sewer line actually runs across Eddie Osman's yard, front yard and ties in out that way, so when we start adding restrooms, they'll have to have some, something done far as rerouting some sewer lines, so just keep that in the back of your mind.
Sewer issues, alright.
That gets that. Next, are you prepared to do the Facility Maintenance?
Yes, sir. I was gonna start it and like I said, Mike and Hutch are here as well. You know, and this is, I'm gonna echo a lot of the comments that you've already heard from Don and from the Chief as well regarding, you know, serviceable life and the span for serviceable life. This, this is a list of, Mike and his staff have gone through and provided inventory and assessment on our current HVAC units that we have on county facilities. The areas that are highlighted are those that are at or very near the end of their serviceable life. We saw just as recently as a couple of weeks ago, we had an emergency situation concerning HVAC going out on a, on a library, and another one with a senior center. So, this is a problem that will continue to move forward, you know, once it gets to that point, once they get to that ten, fifteen, twelve, fifteen year old lifespan, we're gonna have to replace them. Again, it's something that's just simply inevitable, that we know what's going to happen. We were able to kinda dodge this for a while utilizing the funds that we received from the Energy Efficiency Grant, roughly about eight hundred thousand dollars. We used that to replace upwards of thirty-six units over the span of the last about three years. The vast majority of that work went into the jail, we spent about five hundred thousand of that, of those funds in the jail, replacing the chiller, the boiler, and a number of other items within the jail to get that system back up to, back up to, back up to current. But again, as you can see from the list, there are still a number of facilities that have aged HVAC units and, you know, the stark reality is if we, if we don't have, you know, what we're looking at is establishing a facilities maintenance plan going forward. And again, we were able to utilize the Energy Efficiency Grant funds in the past years, but now that that's expired and that's gone away, looking for a means to be able to address the ongoing issue that we're gonna have with aging HVAC units. So, we're just asking for the board for consideration. We highlighted just those that are most, you know, most critical and as you can see, it's about seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, you know, prior to the, to the allotment for the probate court. And speaking with Rocky, we looked at that number of the seven hundred and thirty-two on HVAC units and the priority one items for probate, which would be an offset from the four point seven five down to the three point nine, but, you know, if probate's two hundred, then still some liquid to run.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Was this list not made available to the committee so that we could have got this in? I mean, this, this kinda stuff coming in late is, you know, this, this makes us have to change all the numbers and rework everything because the committee didn't have it. I'm sure it would've been taken into consideration had they had this list.
That's true, they did not and, you know, for that, I apologize. We've been working on it for a number of weeks.
Fourteen weeks we've been meeting, though.
Yes, sir.
There's no excuse for this to come in this late.
Understood.
Commissioner?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Would you address Commissioner Bowman's issue?
If you recall, recent board meeting, there was an emergency that came up with the eighty-one thousand, I think that had to be approved for the, it was at the library, I believe. I'd been working with the staff to try to get this list put together and what I asked them to do is put it on top priority, get it done, and that's why the list is now coming forward. They've been working on it, but when we had the emergency come up, I said, we can no longer continue to have emergencies and this is why the list is now here versus it wasn't prepared back then. The emergency kicked it in gear when we found out that, I didn't wanna see these eighty-one thousand dollar once a quarters coming in and with the list as it is, you can see where it's at, so. It's late, as you said, but that's it.
When we had these two emergencies, it's significant cost and even though it's sixty-eight thousand, thirty-eight, it doesn't matter. When the budget we got, it's, trying to find a nickel is extremely difficult. Now, having said that, in discussion, Fred asked for a list of everything that we have out there. And if you look at this, thank goodness, all of page two and three and all of four is in the white, so that means we realistically looking at something that's gonna be with us a while. But anyway, having this list, and this was after the fact, and this didn't come up until we had these two emergencies, this significant money is just gonna be involved and if you look at the ones in the yellows, I would do this like I would my house. As long as it's working, I'm gonna continue using it. If I can put a little Band-Aid on it for a nickel and dime, I'm gonna do that, but somewhere in the course of time, and we're looking at a six-year program, we know that basically, we're probably looking at seven hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars that could possibly be used for, in case of an emergency. Now, we asked if we could just throw this in and that's exactly what we did at the moment. And that's, in defense of Michael and Fred, you could give me this credit or otherwise. As to why it's, it's kinda like at the last eleventh hour. But it made sense to me that if we know something's out there and we could maybe get it on, but if the board doesn't shed that feelings, then we'll move on and do something else.
I have no issue with the number. My problem is, is that we ran committees through hoops for fourteen weeks meeting and it would've been nice if we would've had some of the information or not all of the information. I'm not blaming Mike, I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying that it, it looks kinda bad once we get a list together and we're depending on the committee to come up with a list and then we come up and now, it's just like the fire stations now, you know, we went from four and a half million to twelve million, we've gone, you know, we're continually jumping up. Before long, there won't be any money left in the, in the district projects, it'll all be one big countywide project, so.
Okay. I'm thinking that this is, do you have a question, Fred?
Regarding the fire stations, Commissioner Bowman, the fire stations that were mentioned were considered by the committee by each of the individual districts. It's just that when they looked at the twenty-one point three million they had, those projects did not make it into the list, the final list. So, the two, two new fire stations that were discussed and added in Mount Carmel and Walker...
Going up, but it is four hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and forty thousand dollars at that rate. So from an overall standpoint, looking to the future of the county, the debt is there, you know? It's not going to go away. The principal payments have to be made. I don't, if it's a unfavorable subject called cotton fields or whatever it may be, in some people's minds, it is a debt that the county and thus the taxpayers are going to have to pay in the future. The only other thing you pray for is that the land values go crazy and you want to sell it or something, get your money back. But other than that, the debt is there, the interest is there. As long as you maintain the debt, you can trade SPOLOST dollars to eliminate it and gain more general fund dollars to run your general fund budgets and cover other items that will be coming up, I'm sure, in future years as well. The beauty of the budget, the beauty of the SPOLOST so far is when the things that the committee's done and you're looking at, buying some ambulances, police cars and things like that, that will obviously take a load off of the future needs that we're going to be there to have to buy those things, but those were over and above our present budget because our present budget doesn't have anything in it for those items. So you're taking care of some of the future concerns there. So there's a lot of positives I see by doing it. But again, you know, the negative one would say is that that's ten million dollars that doesn't fix a road or build a capital project at the same time.
Let me ask you this, just ballpark figures. What is our debt service for this coming year, 2013 to 2014?
About four point, just one second.
No, on a total throughout the county budget, debt service.
You're talking about the payments that are going to be made in this?
I'm talking about debt service on everything that we owe.
A total? Well, you've got, take it in three, in general fund, the balance as of June 30th of this year was twenty-three point six.
Million.
Million. And of that, twelve million was the cotton fields we just discussed, we're discussing. So half of that is the county debt from general fund is that out of impact fees, what's supposed to be paid out of impact fees is sixteen point seven. The jail is the biggest piece of that for eleven million dollars. And again, impact fees are not going to cover that and the general fund will be tapped.
Based on the current impact fees to pay the debt off on the jail, how many years will it take to amortize the jail just alone?
Well, I've got to find my, my impact fee income schedule, but it's, I think the last thing I saw was, it was definitely under a million dollars. It's been rising because of the present construction permitting and so on. And I've got to dig through these schedules. If I've got with me right now, I don't have it at my hand.
I think it'd be light years, right? Because I-
It'd be, it'd be light years, but the problem is, to your, to your question as well, is whether we have it in impact funds or not, it's going to be paid. That debt is being amortized, that interest has to be paid. It's just going to turn into a receivable on the general fund from the impact fees for future years when the money is collected. So cash is going out the door. The general fund is going to have to subsidize it until such time as the fees come in to take care of it. And in that, in that consideration, this year alone, impact fee debt and interest, interest and debt is going to be roughly two point four million dollars.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. I'm looking around, so I'm going to take the, I'm still going to promote it, but they won't be on, the ten million dollars for retired debt will not be on the SPOLOST list. Now, let's start at, let's start with District One. And you give us your-
What did you just say? I'm sorry, I didn't understand. What did you just say?
I said, obviously, the ten million dollars won't be on the SPOLOST list to retire debt.
I don't, I don't, well, I mean, I hadn't, I hadn't decided, I wanted that opinion before I made a decision.
Oh, I understand that, but even after you get that opinion out, I think it's, it probably ain't going to make it. But you correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I, I, no, I think you may be right. I mean, I, I understand where Bruce, I mean Commissioner Holmes and Commissioner Preston are coming from also, but I also think it's a good business decision to reduce the debt when you can. I, you know, I don't, why, can we look at a different number? Can we say, hey, look, you know, let's kind of-
I would, I would be willing to look at any number to reduce the debt.
We need to reduce it if we can. I don't want to take a chance. I want the people that watch the meeting to understand that, you know, we really need to do that, some debt reduction. And I'd be more than willing to look at a number, you know, seven point five or somewhere like that. Just, just a number and I'm opening that up for suggestions, but we do need to reduce it if we can. There's, I just don't, you know, it's a hard decision to sit here and reduce it so many things to where we don't end up getting what we really need to do in some other areas. So I'd be, I'd be very amenable to, I think you said one of them was six million dollars. I'd be very amenable to reducing it to take care of that one.
We've got several we can choose from. I just picked the one that had the four point five percent interest on it.
Right. Well, then we could pay that down by six million dollars and then we wouldn't have that much interest. And I'm just, I'm trying to give us a way to where we've got some wiggle room and where, you know, reducing debt is, we need to do that. That's a, that's, I mean, that's a business principle that I've lived by to the extent that I have no debt. So I mean, but that's where we need to be. I mean, anyway.
Does everybody find that?
I'd just like to add that, Mike, when we first started asking this, I had the exact concerns that Commissioner Bowman had is that, I think financially, I am very conservative. I don't like leverage. I don't like debt tremendously. But it's one of those things where I was worried our message would be just changed as we're trying to get citizens to get excited about how great it is to have people driving through your community who stop here, who buy goods down at Tanger on Jonesboro Road, South Point, to help shoulder the responsibility of what we're trying to do here with, with the citizens. And I didn't want us to lose that because I know when you message this thing, without a doubt, we could probably put, just like we did with the technical school, you could say a million dollars per district would help out with, with funding this. So five million dollars would help. And that probably, nobody's going to fight you on that. But if you put ten million, then people start going, am I going to lose my fire station? Am I not going to get my road surfaced because of it? And that's, that was my concern. And I think Commissioner Bowman nailed that. And I know when, when Mr. Commissioner Holmes and I talked about it, he had a lot of the same concerns as well. And that's, that's the part that I think we need to make sure we have the dialogue on. And nobody's against paying off debt. And if, and if it's perceived as that way, that's not what we're looking at. We want to be good financial stewards, but we want to make sure that we have a very successful SPOLOST as well.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. Do you, you know what the interest is on the Nash Farms property, the bonds?
I do not. I do not. I, I'll get you an answer though. Can I make a recommendation or suggest, just an option, none of giving that? One of the issues I mentioned, again, the key issue is that you're going to see an increase called about half a million dollars a year for principal. That's going to be impacting the budget, like I said, in those years. A suggestion is to put two and a half million dollars for debt reduction, which will be the principal payments only for each of those years when they come up. Now, you're going to trade, if you could do it, if you do it all upfront, I don't know that you will get because some loans, depends on the loan, some loans are, you can pay your principal, pay two and a half million upfront, but they're still going to want their annual payments. They're not going to allow you to take, I'm going to advance the first five year payment. So if you do two and a half, yes, it reduces the debt, yes, it reduces the principal, but at the same time, they may still want those principal payments, which defeats what I'm talking about. So if you leave the money in SPOLOST and just put a half a million dollars, or two and a half million or half million for each of those five years, so that when the payment is due, it comes out of the SPOLOST versus out of the general fund, your budget, as it is presently budgeted, will remain for the next, those number of years. I don't know about this. I just spoke with the county attorney. I'm putting her on the spot. She's going to have to check, so it's subject to. I don't know if you could go ahead and put the full payment, interest and principal. In other words, instead of, again, ten million, take care of the five years of payments at nine hundred thousand, which is four and a half million, so that the general fund budget would see a pickup of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars during those years because SPOLOST would be paying principal and interest. So it's a, it's a pickup in future years to your general fund budget by the interest that won't be paid out of general funds that presently is, but at the same, and the principal payments when they're due would be picked up by SPOLOST. So keep in mind, I brought up inflation and don't want to bring it up again for this meeting, but at the same time, if, if you pay it all upfront, even if it would allow you to make the five payments, you will save the interest on the future of it, but you're going to have to borrow the money in bonds at, say, three percent versus what we're paying. So I'm not so sure there's a real pickup big enough to sit here and say, just make the payments as they go from the SPOLOST funds as they're due. So there's two, two parts here, interest and principal for future budgets or just principal, one's two and a half, one's four and a half, or more, a little more than four and a half, almost five million.
Well, my point is, if you put ten million dollars someplace, you're going to be ten million dollars better off someplace on reducing the debt.
Well, and I'm just trying-
I understand where you're going and I know that. If you paid it all off at one time, maybe penalties and all that, but I'm just-
But I don't even know the penalty, but the, all I'm doing is trying to give you something in between that says, if your heartburn is over, the public seeing ten million go to the debt, just take the portion of what the principal and interest is, or at least principal that's going to be impacting in future years, and that would reduce the ten million to two and a half versus, or four and a half or five million if it's principal interest.
Mr. Chair, instead of going through-
A lot of this, could, could we just agree to a dollar amount and then our staff and our CPAs could work out the details on how that works the best?
I would be very amenable to that.
All right, sir. My position is, I think we should be at least six million dollars. That'd be my position. And I think you need to ask the others.
Okay, I'm going to ask the others that.
I'm two and a half to five million.
Two and a half, five million.
I'm ten.
He's at ten. You at ten?
Six.
Six. I'm at ten. How about eight?
You want to split the bag, right?
You want to go eight? Eight million?
Well, if we've got, we've already got two at six. I mean, my, my two and a half to five is probably closer to six than it is to ten.
We've got two at ten as well.
Yeah, but I think-
We've got two at six, one at two.
Well, but I'm saying my two to five is closer to six than it is. So I would say if you-
Yeah, but I'm saying we've got two at ten.
Pull that number up to eight, then pull it back down to six.
Two at six. I'm just asking if we could put eight on the table.
I like a six million dollar number. I just, I feel like that's, that's-
Why can't we let Fred go through the numbers and maybe come up with a recommendation?
Okay, let's, let's, I find it acceptable. Let's, if Fred, if you could, if you could take the- Put it on your shoulders. Most significant, like, I know we've got the twelve point two, the golf course, we've got six million. If we could put it out, because what we do, we have to put it on the ballot as to how we're going to use it, period. So i- if we could take six point five and retire the six million at Nash Farm, then that, that would be tweaking it.
Well, you get one totally off the book.
Get one off the book. So I'm going to ask Fred if you would give us a list of all the monies, that, all the debts that we owe, and then the, come back to the board and then they can determine what they might do. Does everybody find that acceptable?
I'll get you that schedule before day's over. I've got it already in the format. I'll send to you with all the debt. Again, my suggestion to Commissioner Bowman's question, I would only say you should consider the debt coming out of the general fund, not out of impact because it's a general fund budget that I'm trying to preserve for future years. Impact is a loan. It does affect cash, but it doesn't affect the budget.
Nash Farm is under the impact fees. I agree. But I, I just wanted to get us a number in play and then have the opportunity to, to tell us where it was best to put it.
I'll take a look at principal and interest on all of them.
We got three at six. I think we got four at six now.
We decided to move on now. Okay, let's, we have four. Let's do this. My intent is, is let's get all the county issues on the table. And then we can go through the district list and you can take out the fire stations and take out the stuff that you thought was going to come out of your portion. We can take that out and then we'll take the new number and then look at dividing it by five.
Okay.
So- If you're looking at, I'm going, I'm just going to go through this if y'all have a problem with it. This is, and we can dissect it as we go along. This is the list that the committee gave.
Can we go through each district though?
Sure.
Does it make sense for us to read every item on, for each district since we've got to kind of reabout?
No, what I was going to do, like in District One, got half million dollars for a kitchen at the event center.
Here's my concern that, here's my concern is that we're about, obviously, the countywide list is changed. And that's going to be, it's going to be a bigger pot.
We're going to do this district by district now.
Well, no, what I'm worried about is you're going, we're going to go through, if you start reading off the district list and then we restructure this whole thing because the county list has changed, you're going to upset some people when that project you read off today is different after we all in our individual districts have to go reevaluate everything.
Redo our list.
We have to redo our districts.
Wait a minute now. The fact is, you're going to get the set, you're going to get the same credit-
Well, there's only so much money we can collect.
In the district.
And all that's changed now since we've added all these fire stations and all this, all these other lists got to change now. We don't need to go into the middle.
What it's doing is, is taking money out of the district, but it's not, possibilities-
Not necessarily.
Okay, let's, let's, let's start with Bruce. Let's start with Bruce. Bruce has a comment.
Now is to figure out what our allocation is from here and then we can prioritize what's, what we have on this list. I don't think we need to go through everything and how much it costs because that's going to, you know, the cost is going to change. So we can, I think we can just move forward as long as everybody is okay with what's under their district. We can move, we can move forward and just approve it.
Well, that's- It will absolutely change in that, like, for instance, now we're looking at, you know, we've got to get together on the police precinct. I can tell you it's probably going to be anywhere from three point five to five million dollars. I can tell you that right now. You know, just, just from what I know about the construction. But at the end of the day, see, all of those numbers in the countywide are going to reduce the amount of work that we can do per district.
Okay. What I'm talking about, you got a senior center in District Two, three point five million. Okay, now, is that, is that a county project or is that a district project? You accept that as a district project?
I think we, I mean, I'd love to have it as county, but I think realistically, I think it's a county problem.
The rec center, the rec center, is that, that's a district project. Okay, did, the rec centers that we built in other places, was that built out of?
The rec center built at Ode Mosley, which was done prior to me going in office, was built out of the impact fees. Now, that was, that was a countywide rec center. However, the rec center that was built in District Five was built out of District Five's capital funds. So-
Out of SPOLOST?
SPOLOST, yeah. Out of his SPOLOST funds.
Okay, SPOLOST funds, capital funds, okay.
It was a capital project, right. So I don't know how you can delineate between those.
No, I'm just saying, if you're happy with that, then that, if that's where you want it, then based on past practice, if, if, unless somebody wants to change it, if District Five used their allocation, so to speak, the capital funds to build the rec center, then obviously District Two ought to take their allocations to do that.
Well, there's, there's no such thing right now as impact fees, so there's no way to pull anything else from that. And there's a lot of debt in impact fees right now that has to be paid.
It's a lot of debt that was predicated on impact fees being about two point five million a year. And right now it's hitting about a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And that's why we'd like years of amortizing. Okay, okay, so what's your thoughts?
I think we, we let Rocky and, and then put together, and put together a list of now the new county, tell us what our new, because we were at twenty-one point three per district, now that number might be sixteen, seventeen million. And then we're going to have to go through our districts with staff and figure out where we stand with, with our existing project list. So I think we're kind of where we can do today.
Okay. So you share the same thing?
Yes, I do.
You share that? Okay, okay. Here's what we're going to do. We're at the end of this meeting. We're going to let, we're going to regroup and we're going to take the countywide projects and total them up. And we have to, we have to prioritize that because it may be some things in the capital pool that may not get done in six years. Does that make sense? So then we have to let each district re- So then we have to let each district revamp their numbers. So it, what we got to do, we got to make this thing match and make, make people happy at the same time. So I think we can, we can do that, but we're not going to do it in this meeting. So-
Could I, could I have a recap on what's, what's been? I've been trying to keep up with it, and I don't think I have at all.
I got it right here.
Could I, I could give you a quick change in what's happened with what you've done?
I can't tell you what's changed. I can tell you what we got on the county, and that's all we established right now.
That's what I meant for the county standpoint.
Yeah, I've got the county. So anyway, if everybody's comfortable with that regrouping, nod your head, and, okay, so if somebody move, unless somebody else has any business, then we get back to the agenda here, and then lost it in SPOLOST. Okay, does any chairman or the commissioners have any comments? I do not.
No, I don't.
Okay. The county manager, do you have any comments?
I had a comment.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Real quick, I mean, it's not, it's not official, but we are coming to the close of the airport runway extension is, is actually coming to, you know, we're about to have a new runway, extended runway that's going to be open soon. Stay tuned, I'm sure we'll have some announcement probably around the race time to where we'll do some type of dedication or just, you know, a celebration of it. But I also want to use this moment, we have this airport, it's hopefully going to be an economic resource. I still stand by the discussion I had a while back where I'd like us to consider having some type of citizens committee or somebody to give us input on how we make this an economic engine, and that's all I wanted to add, because I just wanted, we had a moment of celebration of success of having the runway extended, and it's, just wanted to bring it to the citizens' attention.
Thank you so much. Anybody else?
They're opening the airport today, is that right, Ron? They are. Reopening the day? I understand it is, but they're going to have a ribbon cutting later. They're going to plant it round the, like Commissioner Preston said, around the race, which would be very appropriate. Anybody else, commission have a comment? County manager, comments?
Yes, sir.
County attorney?
No, sir.
Somebody move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Have a motion, District One's second from District Four, all in favor, raise your. Thank you.